Good evening. We have reconvened from closed session and I would like to make the following announcement that by a five to zero vote, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney’s Office to defend the cases of People of California, Rob Bonta versus the City of Elk Grove as identified by case number listed on the City Council agenda. And with that, we will adjourn this special meeting at 6:05 PM and switch over to our regular meeting. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting today is Wednesday, May the 10th, 2023. It is 6:05 PM. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption. It will be webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight’s meeting replays will be replayed on Friday, May 12th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, May 14th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.elkgrovescity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card which can be found at the back of the chamber or up here towards the sign-in desk and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. And with that, Mayor, I will be transitioning over for our roll call. For the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Brewer.
Present.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spies.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. All right. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. So if we can have everyone raise. And Ms. Anderson, would you mind leading us in the pledge this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, would you please join us in a moment of silence? Thank you. All right. Next up is our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion, please?
So moved. And Mayor, could we ask to close the meeting in the name of Shirley Peters?
Yes, I had that on my agenda.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Perfect.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Aye. Next item, closed session, Clerk?
Under Section 3, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements, starting with Item 4.1, Proclamations Declaring May 14th, 2023 as Mong American Day, presented to Mong Youth and Parents United and Mia Foster.
All right. Very good. Before I turn over to our recognitions, it looks like we have two people signed up to speak. We’ll start with Marie Vu, followed by Mia Foster. And Mia, you will have an opportunity to speak during the proclamation as well. So I don’t know if you want to use it for that moment. Thank you.
So I’m here to express my deep concern about this proclamation that’s presented tonight to honor May 14th as Mong American Day. Singh Allen, in May of 2022, this proclamation was drafted and proposed by me and another individual. You denied it. On March 30th, 2023, I proposed for this proclamation once again. You created artificial hurdles clearly aimed at discriminating against the Mong community despite the fact that you have approved all other ethnic resolutions that came before it. Your well-documented history of bias against our community makes abundantly clear that your actions are nothing but a continuation of your discriminatory practices. Because I refuse to tolerate your ongoing discrimination against my community, I went public on Tuesday, May 2nd, with your repeated denials of this proclamation. In return, even though the rightful owner of this resolution drafted and proposed it twice to flex your power, you stole this proclamation and handed it over to HIPU, a North Sacramento-based organization, and also to Ms. Foster, a person who does not represent me or our community. The only explanation for your brazen behavior tonight, stealing this proclamation from the rightful owner and giving it to HIPU, is purely for political retaliation. I spoke up against you and your hateful rhetoric about the Mong community and the Mong culture, and I refused to accept your bribe when you offered to be the first person to write me a check to fund my organization. Your sole purpose in shamelessly seizing this proclamation from the rightful owner tonight and handing it over to Ms. Foster is for the same reason you appointed Ms. Foster as the Commissioner to the Diversity Committee on January 12th, 2022, all while you dismissed all the other more suitable candidates. You are fulfilling your end of the bargain on the promise you made to Ms. Foster in the backroom at ARI on the night of April 21st, 2021, at 6:00 PM, while sipping on margaritas in exchange for Ms. Foster to stop being vocal against you. It is important for the people of Elk Grove to be able to trust in the fairness and integrity of our elected officials and the process they oversee. Your backhand dealings and your character does not depict a leader. You are an authoritarian leader that cannot tolerate dissent or opposition. A true leader represents all and welcomes all to the table. Not only have you brought your own baggage and conflicts into this council, your actions have also caused deep division within our community. Your disruptive behavior tonight has further damaged our Mong community, a community of which I am a part of. I urge those who are listening tonight that if you have the authority to do so, please do investigate and scrutinize these backhand dealings that’s occurring on this council. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Vu. Ms. Foster, would you like to speak now or afterwards?
Afterwards.
Okay, very good. Thank you. At this time, I would like to call up Mong Youth and Parents United and Ms. Mia Foster. All right. Thank you. First, we will recognize the Mong Youth and Parents United organization. So Mong American Day, May 14th, 2023. Whereas, May 14th, 2023 marks the anniversary of the fall of Longchang, a United States Mong airbase in Laos during the Laotian Civil War, where the Mong allied with the United States and fought together in Laos against the North Vietnamese, also known as the Secret War, from 1961 to 1975. And whereas, approximately 30,000 to 40,000 Mong soldiers were killed during the Secret War, that included many Mong soldiers who were under 18 years of age, the United States helped Mong refugees flee to Thailand on May 14th, 1975. And whereas, like many immigrant groups before them, Mong refugees resettled to the United States to escape war and persecution, to find opportunities to better their lives and the lives of their children. And whereas, the Mong Youth and Parents United, HIPU, is a nonprofit providing educational, social, and economic opportunities for underserved communities such as Mong community and has extended its services to encompass a healthy living program to address the needs of the community members such as the senior population. And whereas, since its beginning, HIPU has worked and continues to work in establishing and facilitating programs in the areas of English and Mong language acquisition and proficiency, literacy, parent accountability, and involvement, self-discovery, and development. And whereas, HIPU is committed to assisting underserved communities in attaining the highest practicable quality of life with programs focused on culture and language preservation, education, youth empowerment, health, and mental well-being, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims May 14th as Mong American Day in the City of Elk Grove. And we thank Mong Youth and Parents United for their commitment to the Elk Grove and the greater community. Thank you so much for your service. And thank you for your continued service, not only in the greater Sacramento region, but we also know that you do great work serving the residents of our great city as well. So thank you. So before we come down and recognize, we’re going to call up now Ms. Foster, and we’ll also read a proclamation for you as well. And then you’ll have an opportunity to address the Council. So Ms. Foster. We are presenting this to you, so it has all of the same wherashes, but we wanted to make sure that we recognized you for not only your leadership and your great work on the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, but also being instrumental in bringing forth a resolution that recognized your beautiful culture and your community. And the work that you’ve done has not gone unnoticed. So we thank you for your partnership, your dedication, and service to the City of Elk Grove, and in not only continuing to work with our commissioners, but the continued work that you have in our community with your upcoming mental health workshops with your newly formed or your new nonprofit. So thank you for all that you do in our community, and we are better served because you were a part of it. So thank you. So would you like to say something?
First off, I would like to thank Mayor Singh Allen and Council for, you know, having the courage today to pass this resolution to honor May 14th as Mong American Day. May 14th plays an important role in the life of Mong Americans, especially Mong Americans. Oh, I forgot my name. By the way, my name is Chantel. I am the Executive Director for Mong Youth and Parents United. We are a local nonprofit located in Sacramento County here, serving the greater Sacramento region. Our focus, our youth development and senior programming for recreational activities for our seniors, promoting healthy living and, you know. And so, yeah, May 14th is a very, very special day for the Mong Americans because it marks the day that, you know, we left the country of Laos as refugees. In Laos, we were a minority, you know, to the Laotian people as well. And the United States, we are a minority as well. And I thank Mayor Singh Allen for, you know, declaring today and making this resolution to make May 14th as Mong American Day. The City of Sacramento has also done it. The Sac City Unified School District has also done it. And we need more cities to recognize this day. I think it’s a right step to say that Mong Americans, we do belong in America, and Mong Americans are real Americans too. And so this is the right step. You know, we hope the state can do it and the federal government can do it. And so it just allows Mong Americans to be in a peace place of history. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Hi. Thank you for inviting Sean and I to tonight. My name is Kelly Lee. I am the Program Manager at Mong Youth and Parents United, working closely with our youths and our elderly community. And so accepting this award represents many things. For our youths, it represents visibility and representations. For our elders, it represents acknowledgement and recognition. And so thank you for allowing us to be a part of this movement and history and continue to make our community better. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all that you do. Ms. Foster?
So a year ago, I was supposed to be standing here in attendance alongside my fellow Diversity and Inclusion Commissioners, with whom I served at the time, to receive the proclamation recognizing May 2022 as AAPI Heritage Month. And within that proclamation was a covenant recognizing Mong American Day on May 14th, which had just been recently formally passed and proclaimed by the Elk Grove Unified School District. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend that evening because that was the same evening that my family and I had to make the very difficult decision to pull our family patriarch off of life support. My dad passed away several days later. So tonight, I’m here to receive this proclamation, formally recognizing Mong American Day on May 14th in the City of Elk Grove, in honor of my late father, 2nd Lieutenant Wa Pao Yang, and those of his generation whose bravery and sacrifices shifted the existence of an entire community and culture out of obscurity onto the world stage and into a place where their children and their children’s children could thrive. So I want to thank the Diversity and Inclusion Commission and the amazing city staff members who work alongside them for their tireless work and the passion they bring to the table that keeps the city moving forward. You guys do not get enough credit. So thank you for remembering that this effort from last year, but more importantly, thank you for remembering the Mong community within this city. I also want to thank all of you guys, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. I love that this council is as deeply diverse as the city that you all represent. And that is how I know that each of you can truly understand the meaning of tonight’s proclamation to us. Because as it has been written in Mong history, it’s also been written into yours, and that is the history and the journey of the people and the sacrifices that have been made to get to where each of us and all of us are today, no matter the color of our skin. The Mong American story is a universal one of resilience, courage, and perseverance that transcends differences at every level. This proclamation not only recognizes the contributions of Mong Americans, but it also serves as a reminder of the work that we must continue to ensure that all the members of our community have access to the opportunities and resources they need to thrive. Last but not least, I do want to thank anyone who’s ever supported and advocated for the Mong American community. It is through the collective efforts of everyone within this room and beyond it that we will continue to build a better future for Mong Americans in all communities. So let us continue to celebrate and elevate the Mong American story and work towards a brighter future for all. Thank you so much, everyone.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Come back here. We can get.
and presenting will be Councilmember Robles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It’s just tough to kind of follow that. If the cycle, is it the American?
Elk Grove Cycling Club.
Elk Grove Cycling Club. You would like to come forward?
Sacramento area bicycle advocates.
Yeah. Would you like?
Would you all like to come forward? That would be great.
Sorry about that. It wasn’t on my notes.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, and I’ll read the proclamation, but I just want to say that I was excited to see that we have a cycling group. I definitely believe that Elk Grove is an active community, definitely always vigilant and seen several cyclists around, especially on Franklin and White Lock. So I’m always keeping my eyes open. I might even get into cycling myself. I like running. Believe it or not, I actually like running, but cycling is something I’m like, it’s a different ballgame. But we definitely want to, you know, honor and recognize the great work that you’re doing within Elk Grove, within Sacramento and the region. So I’ll read the proclamation and then able to freely just speak afterwards. Bike Month, May 2023. Whereas, May is National Bike Month promoted by the League of American Bicyclists and celebrated in communities from coast to coast since 1956. A chance to showcase many benefits of cycling, encourage more people of all ages ’ ability to give biking a try. Whereas, in 2004, May is a Bike Month that has been celebrated across the Sacramento region, El Dorado, Placer, Sacramento, Sutter, Yolo, and Yuba counties. Events planned throughout the month promote and encourage people to try cycling for some of their trips. Every day is a good day to choose bike riding, but May is special because people want to get outside, enjoy the wonderful city and its warm weather. It hasn’t been warm lately, but it’s warm weather. Especially enjoy Elk Grove. The great bikes, the great bike lanes, the trails, and for recreational riding and commuting and seeing the city that we call home. Whereas, May is the Bike Month is simple. To go for a ride, any ride, whether it is short, for a short coffee trip, or choose a ride just to go on a bike ride, the month of May is a great time to check with the Elk Grove Cycling Club, our local bike shops, to find other people to which to ride with. With Bikes to Work Week 2023 taking place, May 15 through the 21st, Bike to Work Day on Friday, May 19th, and Bike and Roll to School Day on Wednesday, May 3rd. Now and therefore be it resolved that the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims the month of May 2023 as Bike Month in Elk Grove. So, signed on the 10th of May, 2023. Again, I just want to say thank you because as we continue to advocate for people to be outside to cycle, I think there was, unfortunately, you know, I think COVID actually allowed people to go into cycling and even running and doing more recreational outside. I know that I kind of got into it for like 10 minutes, and then after that, I was like, I can’t do this. I would talk to my friends and they’re like, we’re going on a 20-mile bike ride. I’m like, I’ll do five and that’s it. But I just want to say thank you, and we want to honor you here as a city and definitely proclaim May as Bike Month. And if you guys want to share any words?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Scott Holsey. I’m the President of the Elk Grove Cycling Club. We’re a nonprofit to promote education and getting out and riding bikes and, you know, making motorists aware of, you know, we’re out there and we hope to really move forward with the city. It’s great to be back in the, in front of the Elk Grove City Council for the May 2023 May as Bike Month proclamation. This morning, the Elk Grove Trail Committee hosted an Elk Grove City cycling event that was attended by 28 bike riders. Halfway through the ride, the Elk Grove Cycling Club hosted an Energizer station. We provided snacks. The local nugget market donated bottles of water. And thanks to the efforts of Kaylee Lyons and Carrie Whitlock, we had plenty of May as Bike Month giveaways to hand out to the bike riders. Biking is such a great community recreation, and this morning was a wonderful example of how a local city, a local nonprofit club, and a local business can work together to achieve a successful event for the city and its community. In the future, the Elk Grove Cycling Club looks forward to working with the City of Elk Grove and promoting cycling events for its citizens. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening and how much we greatly appreciate your efforts in supporting the Elk Grove biking community. Thank you.
Thank you. Will it come down?
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Good to see you.
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 How are you?
Have someone borrow a bike.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Right in the middle.
Thank you so much.
He’s in right here.
I gotta join us.
Dave, you want us to do a U?
I got you.
You got it? Okay.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Perfect.
And then? Control District. Welcome, Gary.
Well, thank you to the City Council for the invitation to come out and talk to you a little bit about what we do here locally for vector control specifically and protection of public health as we start to get into the summer season. So my name’s Gary Goodman. I’m the District Manager for the Sacramento, Yolo, Mosquito, Vector Control District located right here in Elk Grove off of Bond Road there. We also, we cover mosquito control for all of Sacramento and all of Yolo County. We have a satellite office in Woodland as well. So our goal obviously is to try to help protect people from vector-borne disease and of course, the nuisance that mosquitoes cause. And as we get into the summer months here and things start to warm up a little bit, people are going to want to be outside, enjoying their backyard, swimming pool, barbecues, all of those types of things. And of course, with that warm weather also brings mosquitoes. And the biggest challenge that we face in this upcoming season and we have for the last 20 years now has been West Nile virus. It is a vector-borne disease. It is a disease that’s actually carried by birds, and it’s vectored by mosquitoes. So a mosquito bites an infected bird, picks it up, passes it on to another bird, or passes it on to a human or a horse. And so our goal is to be able to try to reduce the number of mosquitoes and obviously try to get education out to the general public as to what they can do to protect themselves from mosquitoes in general. So we use what we call a kind of a five-step integrated management approach. The first is public information. We do a lot of advertising flyers, a lot of school presentations, a lot of presentations at events. And then specifically, we do a lot of repellent distribution as well to try to make sure that people can try to protect themselves. But the goal is to try to help educate the public in general as to what they can do about their own property and making sure that they’re not breeding mosquitoes and of course, that they’re not being bitten as well. Then we go into what we call our surveillance program, and this essentially is us setting traps out throughout our district to gauge the population of mosquitoes at any one particular point in time. So locally here in Sacramento, in the valley, we have about 23 different species of mosquitoes. Not all mosquitoes transmit disease, but the ones that do transmit disease, we have in abundance, unfortunately. And because I mentioned that West Nile is a bird disease, the types of birds that carry West Nile are crows, corvids, jays, things again that we have in high abundance here. So West Nile is always going to be an issue or a problem for us. So our surveillance program sets traps. We collect those mosquitoes, bring them back to our location in Elk Grove. We separate them by sex and species and then test the females because only female mosquitoes bite. Male mosquitoes don’t bite. They only feed on nectar. So we test those to try to figure out if we have virus activity in the area and then of course, do interactive measures associated with that. If you’ve been by our facility in Elk Grove, you’ll see all of those fish ponds that are out there. Those are not mosquito breeding ponds, but they are fish ponds. That’s our biological control program. We have 22 ponds dedicated towards breeding these small mosquito fish. We’re probably the largest mosquito fish breeding facility in the country. We plant about 3,500 pounds of fish per year just in Sacramento and Yolo County, places like rice fields, wetlands, backyard swimming pools that are not being maintained, horse troughs, all types of areas where mosquitoes will breed, and these fish can take care of the problem for us. Then we have an ecological management department. This is working with landowners such as US Fish and Wildlife, Stone Lakes right here in Elk Grove, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Nature Conservancy, CRP, large landowners that essentially have water and vegetation interface, which is the perfect site or breeding ground for mosquitoes. So we work with them to be able to try to implement best management practices so that they can reduce mosquito production on their property that has less of an impact on the general community. And then we get into what we call chemical control, and essentially, these are our technicians going out on a daily basis. And so our district is broken up into about 30 different zones, and we have a technician that works in each one of those zones every day, and they look for breeding grounds for mosquitoes. Where are those mosquitoes going to breed from? So here are some, a few photos essentially of mosquito breeding sites. Some things are very easy for us to see. If you go through the bypass, you see all the rice fields, anything that holds water and that has a vegetation interface is a perfect breeding ground for mosquitoes. So wetlands, rice fields, agricultural ditches, very easy for us to drive by and see. So, wetlands, rice fields, agricultural ditches, very easy for us to drive by and see. What's more difficult for us is what's in people's backyards. So, it's hard for us to see behind the fence. And so, what we do is we ask the public to try to help us by going around your yard once a week and look for anything that might be holding water. Mosquitoes don't breed, don't need a lot of water. They can breed in just a bottle cap of water. So, anything that will hold water for more than a week has a possibility for breeding mosquitoes. So, as we get into these summer months, obviously, all of this rain that's just recently happened has filled up a number of sources. But people are going to turn on their sprinklers because they're maintaining their yard. All of those things that might be in your backyard, whether it be the dog dish or a children's toy, a coffee can, anything that's in your backyard that can hold water is a perfect breeding ground for mosquitoes. So, we want people to recognize that and dump those things out if they can on a weekly basis. And of course, if you're being bothered by mosquitoes, call us. This is exactly what we do. We typically will send somebody out same day or within 24 hours to assess the problem because the earlier we can identify it, the easier the time that we have in being able to try to reduce those sources. So, what are we anticipating for this year? A lot of mosquitoes. We've had a lot of water. And so, a lot of places over the last seven or eight years that we've been in this drought that have been dry have now had a lot of water associated with it, especially in our rural areas. And so, we're already very busy picking up mosquito abundance already. And so, we're anticipating a big year. So, we want the public to recognize that and to try to take the appropriate precautions to reduce mosquito production on their own property. And then of course, if you're being bothered, then give us a call so we can come out and try to assess the issue. But as we start to get into these warm temperatures, this is the perfect, this is the perfect time as mosquitoes are going to start to come off in abundance. Our biggest years, our biggest months are in the summer months, June, July, August, and September, those hottest months. That's when mosquitoes are going to be most active. West Nile virus activity, as I mentioned, this is a summary of what we saw in the state of California last year. 208 human cases were reported. And one thing I want to try to identify here is typically about 70 to 80% of these cases are what we call the very serious neuroinvasive form of West Nile. So, West Nile virus, typical symptoms are flu-like symptoms, something that we've become very familiar with over the last couple of years. And so, a lot of times, people will recover within a week and they never go to the doctor, they never get diagnosed, but they were suffering from West Nile. Unfortunately, actually with West Nile, the symptoms can last for a week and you can recover two weeks or even months on end. And so, it is something that if you're having long-term symptoms of that, we advise folks to go see their doctor, especially if they remember being bitten by a mosquito, to try to get tested so that we can then try to do other measures to be able to try to help protect the community as a whole. So, we know that West Nile is a severely under-reported disease in the state of California. CDC estimates that for every neuroinvasive form of the disease, there's anywhere from 30 to 70 additional people that were stricken with West Nile but just never got diagnosed. So, you're really talking about thousands of people every year that are being bitten by infected mosquitoes and are exhibiting some level of symptom. And people sometimes want to minimize the impacts of West Nile virus. There was a study that was done by California Department of Public Health a number of years ago where they did a survey of people that had exhibited symptoms from West Nile virus. And over 50% of those folks, even a year later, were still experiencing some symptom associated with it. So, it can be very serious. Obviously, the neuroinvasive form is an encephalitis-like symptom that can lead to paralysis, blindness, and of course, even death. And so, we want people to be aware of that. Here's a brief overview of West Nile virus activity last year for us. And Elk Grove was actually a relatively light year. And so, we're anticipating a much busier year this year. But you can see, we only picked, we didn't pick up any mosquito samples and only one positive dead bird on the outskirts there. But you can see just right over your border there, we did pick up some West Nile virus activity last year in the mosquito samples with identified by those red circles. Another concern that I think we brought up to the council before is invasive mosquitoes. As I mentioned, we typically have, we have 23 different species of mosquitoes that are kind of endemic to our particular area. And we're starting to find what we call invasive mosquitoes. These are mosquitoes that are not supposed to be here. These are endemic to South America, Central America, Mexico, and of course, Asia, specifically the yellow fever mosquito and the Asian tiger mosquito, Ady's agypdai and Ady's alvepictis. And the challenge that we find with these is twofold. One, they like to be around people and so, they tend to be around homes, which means it's much more difficult for us to be able to try to identify them and trap them associated with that. And so, we need the public's help in being able to identify if they're being bothered by mosquitoes. The second aspect of it is that these are very efficient vectors of more exotic diseases that we can have here in the area such as Dengue, Zika, chikungunya. And so, we want to make sure that we don't get these mosquitoes established in our area because we do have cases of these diseases that people bring back from other countries during travel and we don't want to have local transmission of these diseases as well. So, again, if you're being bothered by mosquitoes, please give us a call so we can come out and assess what type of mosquito it is and give you appropriate measures to try to control. So, here's an area we have detected these invasive mosquitoes in Elk Grove, a couple different locations, what we would call, I guess, older Elk Grove and then even in the Laguna side of it. So, we are actively doing measurements here. This is very intensive. We have to go door-to-door, getting, trying to get into people's backyards so that we can see what, where they might be breeding. Again, they like to be indoors. So, if you see mosquitoes indoors in your house, please give us a call. Let us know so that we can come out and try to assess the issue. And with that, as I mentioned, West Nile virus is a bird disease. So, we have the dead bird hotline. If you see a dead bird, please call this number, 877-WNV-BIRD. Or you can also go to our website, www.fightthebite.net and report that. We want to know. Typically, we'll go out, we'll pick up that bird and we'll test it to see if it's carrying viruses that we can then again enact any appropriate measures appropriately. And with that, that's all I have unless the council has any questions.
All right. Thank you for that very itchy presentation. And mosquitoes like me, I saw I can say they are, I get bit all the time. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just quickly comment. Gary, I really love your presentation. I mean, it's just very informative and, you know, the invasive mosquitoes are especially disturbing. And so, appreciate you getting the word out to our community about it.
Absolutely. Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Just a comment. But no, to piggyback off of council members soon, I definitely appreciate the presentation because every year when the waters start to get low and some of us have little, really shallow puddles, we don't realize that mosquitoes can breed and grow within those environments because it doesn't take much, but it doesn't, at the same time, it doesn't take much for you to get bit.
That's true.
And so, it's very important for us to be mindful of our, of our house, what we have around us, what we have around our apartment complexes, just to try and make sure that we don't get bit. Because West Nile virus can hit you in a lot of different ways because a number of years ago, I was, I had West Nile virus and it wreaked a lot of havoc on my system. So much so that it developed and really hyperactive, made me from pre-diabetic to full-blown diabetic. And so, it's one of those things that we really got to be vigilant on. And so, this, this was awesome. Thank you for sharing.
Well, on the, on the measure of not getting bit, repellent packets. We buy this stuff by the pallet. So, if you have, especially as we start to get into the summer, if there are events that you guys are hosting with concerts in the park, movies in the park, anything in the evening time, please give us a call. We'll be more than happy to deliver this along with, you know, informational packets to hand out to the residents that are there. So, again, they can protect themselves. These are one of the easiest things that you can do. If you're going to be out when mosquitoes are out, just put on a quick repellent. There are a number that are very effective. DEET is the one that is kind of the gold standard, but if you're only going to be out for a shorter period of time, there's also lemon of, oil of lemon eucalyptus, picaridin oil. There's a couple other more natural ones that are still useful, but definitely putting on a repellent with that.
And thank you for sharing that because also in the same vein, this Saturday, there's going to be a double movie feature at Elk Grove Park and then the following weekend, there's going to be a movie here at District 56. So, this is all timely to have that information out in the hands because people are going to be out and about and want to enjoy the movie and the last thing they want to do is slap it aside their face and slap in their arms.
That's right. Unless it's a slasher movie, I guess.
Even more reason why you want to have it. You don't want to accidentally slash yourself.
The other thing I did want to mention is that your advocate or your appointment on our board, I don't know if anybody recognizes Lynn Hawkins.
Of course. The legend.
He's somewhat of a hermit, but he's been, especially his previous experience working for the Department of Pesticide Regulation, invaluable, has been a president of our board on a couple of different occasions. But his input is always very valued and he always has the best interests of the citizens at heart. So, I appreciate all of Lynn's efforts on our board as well.
You know, where I have found a number of, what were you saying?
I just said, "we do too."
Oh, yes. Palm trees, I have a lot of palm trees and the fronds really hold lots of water. And then sort of the base, like the bark, but it's really thick and it's almost serves like a dish.
Yep.
And as they fall off, I have, you know, a lot of standing water there as well.
Absolutely. That's right. We know where you live.
You know, yes. I told you, I get bit a lot. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you again for that presentation. All right. Next up is item 4.4, Proclamation Recognizing May as Building Safety Month, presenting is our Vice Mayor, Kevin Spees, and calling up our building official, Brian Franger or Fringer?
Yes, Franger.
Franger, okay.
All right. Come on up. There you go. Hang back there, all right. Let's see. So, so first of all, I'll just add my personal thanks in this because what a lot of folks don't understand is that building safety is extremely important. I think there have been a number of instances and in one particular, you know, in the Bay Area where a lot of people died in a facility because the standards weren't being held and the building, the building owner wasn't responsible. And so, sometimes we get applicants who are unhappy that they have to, you know, do certain things, but it is, it is for a reason. And so, with that, we want to recognize you because we understand that it is not always an easy job. And so, we'll get that fixed. Whereas the City of Elk Grove's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, water conservation, and resilience in the built environment that affects our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confident that our structures are safe and sound. And our confidence is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry. So, the California Building Code and the City of Elk Grove Building Safety Division and Casumet Fire Department Fire Prevention Staffs that administer the code ensure these safeguards protect the public from natural disasters such as storms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. So, this building month, excuse me, Building Safety Month exists to remind the public about that critical role that our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings. The theme for the Building Safety Month 2023, "It Starts With You," encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety. Whereas the City of Elk Grove strives to innovate through the streamlining of the permitting process and improve communication with our development community in order to ensure that while compliance with codes are achieved, they are done so in a way that does not hinder economic vitality. So, in observance of the Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. So, be it resolved that City of Elk Grove, City Council of the City of Elk Grove does hereby proclaim the month of 2023 as Building Safety Month. Thank you.
Yours?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the board. Brian Fringer, Elk Grove Building Official, thank you for the proclamation and recognition of Building Safety Month. It's my pleasure to represent the city and to work with professionals within the building division as well as the CSD Fire Division. Chief Ray and I work together to make decisions and ensure public safety is met within the codes. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Ray.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, council member. Thank you very much, Lance Ray, Fire Marshal for Casumet Fire. We do tend to generate phone calls from time to time to our elected bodies. I can tell you from working with your staff that I find them to be searching for solutions. That's the highest compliment you can pay to a building official and their group there, looking for solutions. Building in California, the current code is very complex. There's going to be disagreement, there's going to be interpretation. Your staff, and it really starts at the top with Darren and his group, are constantly looking for solutions. And I, we truly appreciate that collaboration, the communication, and how we work together as a team. So, and just wanted to say thank you very much to the elected officials on this group and our elected officials as well for the support, as I know you do field some phone calls and you have to explain kind of what we're up to. So, thank you for that as well.
Thank you. We'll come down there and there is a typo on this that we'll get that fixed. We have the wrong date.
The header had the wrong one. Sometimes I get stuck in the past.
Okay, next is item 4.5, Proclamation Recognizing the Week of May 21 through the 27th as Public Works Week. And presenting will be Councilmember Darren Soon, when we're calling up, well, you're here, Jeff Warner, our Public Works Director.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, as was mentioned, this is, it's my honor to dedicate this proclamation, a National Public Works Week for the week of May 21 through 27. So, we're a little early, but just want to acknowledge, you know, the, we talked about the building officials earlier and you see buildings, but the value in these public work services are not as always apparent. A lot of times, you don't know when everything's running right, everybody's none the wiser. But sure as heck, when it's flooding or traffic is happening, everybody knows really quick the importance of public works. So, I would just start by saying, whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as fleet and facilities, recycling and waste, traffic, drainage and flood control, street maintenance, real estate, engineering, and construction. And whereas the health, safety, welfare, and the quality of life of the City of Elk Grove residents greatly depends on these services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works employees. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Department of Public Works is influenced by the public's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that they perform. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims May 21 through 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week in the City of Elk Grove, and urges Elk Grove residents and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with Elk Grove Public Works Services and Programs. Mr. Warner, floor is yours.
Counsel, I'm Jeff Warner, your Public Works Director. First, I want to just thank you guys again for recognizing National Public Works Week. It's a very important week for me and my staff. The reason we're here early is because we want to plug our Big Truck Day, which is coming up, which I'll certainly do later. I also want to thank you guys for your ongoing trust and support. I think it really is helpful, gives us confidence in the work that we do every day, and it gives us that extra motivation to continue to deliver excellent service to the community. Of course, National Public Works Week is all about the employees, the men and women of public works who selflessly dedicate their time and effort to serving the community. I've been watching the three sitting behind me diligently working as we speak on several things not related to this city council meeting. Sam's reviewing our upcoming CIP book. I've noticed that. So, really appreciate them. Each and every day as director, I grow to appreciate staff more and more as I witness, again, their dedication and hard work that they put into everything that they do. They really earn that trust that you guys put in us and certainly have earned my trust as well. And lastly, again, I want to recognize Big Truck Day. It's happening next week. So, it's happening a little bit early. We have a lot of things going on. The following week during National Public Works Week, it was a little bit weird that the APWA decided to do it then. So, anyway, we're going to have our Big Truck Day on May 17th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at District 56. It's a great venue, a great opportunity for the youth in our community, really geared towards ages 2 to 6, but all are welcome. And I'm happy to announce this year that we're bringing out our police department. Our mobile Arctic is going to be out there. So, Chief Davis and I have collaborated with staff to make sure that that's an opportunity. They do have some big vehicles that they want to show off as well and certainly highlight the collaboration that goes into storm prevention, but also, you know, storm response during these emergencies that we've had certainly recently. So, we're pleased to have that this year. So, thank you again very much.
All right. Let's hear for Public Works.
All right, next is item 4.6, Youth Commission Semiannual Update. Please welcome our youth commission. All right.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Femi Omotesha, administrative analyst in the City Manager's Office and advisor to the Elk Grove Youth Commission. We are concluding the transitional year for the commission. It's been baby steps for me, and I'm very proud of this group because they have worked very hard to accomplish most of what they set out to do. Their passion for serving their community and peers is very inspiring. This commission has put on several events, not only to serve the teens of Elk Grove, but also for the families to enjoy. I want to thank each one of you for all your hard work this last few months. It's been a very busy period with so many tasks to handle. But you have showed up and you got them done. The commissioners are here to present and will also be recognizing our graduating seniors today. I would like to thank our historian, Jaden, for doing a great job of putting together the PowerPoint that we'll be going through. Thank you, Jaden. I will now hand over to the commission for their presentation. I'd like to introduce Cassie Parsons, this year's chair, to begin the presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Cassie Parsons, and I'm a current junior at Pleasant Grove High School. This is my third year on the commission and I am the chair. Our vice chair this year is Ella Bueno. She's a junior at Franklin, and this is her second year on the commission. Our secretary is Ethan Lipsy. He's a senior at Cosumnes Oaks, and this is his first year on the commission. Our historian is Jaden Chen. He's a junior at Cosumnes Oaks, and this is also his first year on the commission. We, our Diversity and Inclusion Commission Youth Liaison is, he's a sophomore at CO, and this is his first year. Lindsay Noe is a sophomore at PG, and it is her first year on the commission. Garrett is a senior at Pleasant Grove, and he, it is his second year on the commission. And Haley Runner is a senior at Bradshaw, and this is her second year on the commission. And Pratham is a sophomore at Franklin, and this is his first year on the commission. The Elk Grove Youth Commission is an appointed advisory board of 10 teens from Elk Grove. These 10 teens represent and advocate for teens and youth voices all over Elk Grove. The Youth Commission also helps create events and opportunities for youth in the Elk Grove region. I want to thank you for all of your support and your continued support to the commission. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Ethan Lipsy. I will be presenting for the first part of the year review. Our first meeting was on August 10th of 2022, where we had our warm welcome from the City Manager, Jason Bearman. Thank you very much for that, as well as we did some team building activities. We had a lot of icebreakers and we did some sort of joining together and kind of learning about the Brown Act as well from our city clerk, Jason Lindgren. It was great. And we also reviewed our youth commission roles and responsibilities, and we kind of just had some fun. It's a retreat, so why not? Thank you.
What's up, council? Our first major project was the annual food drive. We do this in December, so we partner with the Elk Grove Food Bank. We get three or four collection bins. We put them out in heavily trafficked areas like District 56 and City Hall, and we collect canned foods. So we're happy to report that we collected two full drums of food this year that greatly benefited our local community.
So on April 15th, we had our fourth annual Family Fun Day at Old Town Plaza. And we had carnival games, food trucks, face painting, and then School of Rock came out to perform. And the weather was perfect and it was a really good turnout.
All right, so we had some extra money to allocate towards scholarships for the youth. And we gave out four scholarships this year for a total of $3,000. And the requirements were that the student must live or attend school in Elk Grove, and the deadline was May 1st. And last week, we selected the winners among a group of us, so Jaden will announce the winners.
All right, it is with great pleasure and excitement that I announced the recipient of this year's Youth Commission scholarships. So if, when we call my name, could you please come up to the podium so we can take a group photo afterwards? So for two winners of the $1,000 Exceptional Youth Scholarship, we have Jake Tabah from Laguna Creek High School and Sia Sama from Franklin High School. And for the $500 Merit-Based Youth Scholarship, the winner is An Dudo from Laguna Creek High School. And for the $500 Outstanding Achievement Scholarship, the winner is Vivian Huang from Franklin High School.
Who's next?
So one of our upcoming events is the Heritage Parade. And it's going to be at District 56 at the Avenue of the Arts. And it's in collaboration with the Neighbor Good Market. And there's going to be two cultural performances and a parade. It's going to be from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Thursday, May 11, 2023, and it's tomorrow. And so please feel free, if you come, to wear your cultural attire. And also, there's going to be booths and food trucks as well.
Our next upcoming event is this Saturday, and it's one of my favorite events because it's only kids and no adults are allowed, so it's pretty fun. This happens from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and we have a lot of activities there such as carnival games, the game truck, which is a really big hit there, the times I've gone, and then the 360 photo booth, the social media lounge, and a live DJ and light show.
I would like to take a moment to recognize and commend our outgoing seniors. First, we have Garrett Winok, a member of the Food Drive and Scholarship Committees. Garrett worked really hard on reviewing this year's scholarship application, more so because it was his mom's birthday and he had to miss part of the fun. Garrett has been with the commission for two years. He's graduating from Pleasant Grove High School and will be attending Cosumnes River College. Next is Haley Runner. Haley has been with the commission for two years and is on the Family Fun Day Committee. She's graduating from Bradshaw Christian School and will be going to Point Loma Nazarene University. Last, but definitely not the least, Ethan Lipsy is a secretary this year. And he attends Cosumnes High School and has been on the commission for one year. He's still weighing college options, and we wish him all the best. I would like to appreciate this group of seniors because they were really, really hardworking and they put in their best. To the six commissioners returning next year, your passion for serving your community is astounding. It has truly been an honor to support all of you this year. I'm very, very grateful to have had the opportunity to work with you. And for the graduates, I wish you all the best life could bring.
We have four spots now available for new youth commission members. They're available for anyone who's currently attending high school in the Elk Grove Unified School District. And on the slide, you can see the two QR codes that are where the applications can be found. And we look forward to reviewing them. Are there any questions?
I'm sure there'll be a lot of comments for sure. First of all, congratulations to our graduating seniors. Great job, well done, you finally reached that point. So we're proud of you, wishing you continued success. It has been a great privilege watching you in your various roles in the community, not only coming and speaking before the commission, but just really proud of all of you that you are committing yourselves to public service and community service. So looking out here in the room, I know our future is bright because we have all of you leading the way. So thank you for stepping up and showing, showing the way. I'll turn it over to some of my colleagues for any additional comments.
Oh yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I also want to commend all of you for, for being part of this and helping us, you know, communicate with our youth and getting the word out. I'm especially really, well, I was, I was going to say proud, but it's really neat to see how you have evolved in terms of your activities, you know, the food drive, the family fun day, the scholarship. I really love that, that's awesome. And, and Jaden, that's, this is great. I love this presentation, the QR codes and the moving parts of it. This is, this is a fantastic presentation. I also want to congratulate the seniors, you know, Garrett, Ethan, Haley. We wish you well as you go forth and hope you're able to come back and, and be working here in Elk Grove one day. I'm sure your parents will appreciate that too. And lastly, Femi, I want to thank you for stepping in and, and the role you've assumed now. And I'm, I can tell you, you're enjoying it, and we really appreciate your work and efforts in this capacity as well. So great job, everybody.
Any other comments, our vice, Vice Mayor?
I do. So first of all, Femi, awesome. I know this is your first presentation that we're doing on, on this, right? And it's fantastic. These are, these are great young, young folks, and I'm really glad that you had the opportunity to, to lead them this year. And so I certainly echo everything that Councilmember Soon said, but I have another particular issue that I need to address, and that's first, an apology to Ethan. So last week, I think it was last week, right, at Elk Grove Regional Scholarship Foundation?
Yes.
Right? Okay, I think that was last week. Ethan was the winner of, it's the city's scholarship called Better in the Generation of Tomorrow, right? And he was instructed to bring a thank you letter for the city. And he dutifully brought a letter. It was a great letter, I read it, and then I promptly forgot it on the table. So I don't, I didn't have it to share with you. So I do want you to know that he wrote a very nice letter. Very, he very much appreciated it. It was great having an opportunity to sit down and talk with him. And so just so you know, he wrote the letter, "I'm the loser that forgot it." So, thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Brewer?
No, I want to congratulate everyone for a job well done this year. Because I know a lot of, a lot of you have, I've seen you either at, not only at these events, but also at the Pumpkin Festival and other events that go on throughout the city. And it's so funny because when I go through my pictures and see that a lot of you have been in my pictures in some way, shape, or form, it's kind of funny. But it shows that, that you are definitely out and about, being active, being a part of the community, and really doing your stuff, doing your stuff. And, and that's, that should make, that should make all, all of us happy, should make all of us proud. And to see Femi leading the way for the team this year has been, has been, has been really good. Because every time I want to go walk by to, to my office, Femi is always full of excitement. She has a big old smile on her face because she knows she has something good and positive to share with, with the youth commission. And that, that's, that's a sign of, of a really good leader. I'm excited to see what's going to happen next year. But for all of you, congratulations for a job well done. And for all of you that are coming back, looking forward to seeing what you guys are going to do next year in 2024. And for the four of you that are, that are graduating and moving on, congratulations. And can't wait to see all of you come back and take our spots at some point.
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to everyone and for completing this year. And for those who are graduating, come back next year because I want to hear, "What's up, council?" That's one thing that I want to hear. It always makes me just chuckle because it's kind of funny. I'm like, you know what, we need more of that, right? We need more of that friendliness and coming up and speaking. So congratulations to you guys. You guys are doing something that a lot of your peers aren't doing right now, but you guys are investing the time. You guys are the future. And it's kind of funny because you're like, oh, you're the future, right? Well, you guys are the present, and you guys are doing this right here and now, right? You guys are doing these cool events that you guys can invite your friends to. And everybody's going to be like, well, this started because of me. So keep it up, keep up the great work. You know, when you come back, like Councilman Brewer said, you will eventually be in one of these spots as well. So please keep it up. Congratulations to the seniors who are graduating, those who are coming back. Next year, it's going to be cool, so to see what you guys are doing, and thank you, Femi, for what you're doing as well.
Yeah, we're all proud parents here, you know, we're beaming with great pride for all of you.
Like a proud older brother, okay?
Whatever.
Mayor and council members, we have this plaque for the seniors, if you don't mind presenting it today.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
What's up, council? Hey, you gotta come back, man. You gotta come back. I got you right here. I'm gonna stand next to you, so if you wanted to come back, you'd be like, "What's up, council?"
He adjusted to the left side.
Here's the popular one.
Okay, here we go. One, two, three, one more. One, two, three.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That's good. I'm in college, yeah.
The whole commission, the whole.
Thank you for that. And then, Femi, as we do the outreach for, to fill the vacancies, if we can expand not just Elk Grove Unified School District, but I think the bigger criteria is, is a resident. We obviously have someone from Bradshaw Christian. So just expanding it to maybe our charter schools, we have our Fortune School here as well. And then some that might be on independent study. So just to be a little bit more inclusive in our outreach that we could, you know. So as we put that call out there, and I can probably send you a list for some of the more independent study opportunities, and then particularly the Fortune School, just to give them an opportunity because they, they are right here in our city so that they have an opportunity to serve as well. Thank you. All right, next up is our public comment. And we, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity, and I see a number of folks signed up to speak. Let's see, we, and I apologize in advance if I pronounce the name wrong. I'm not all the way up? Oh, oh, there we go. Okay, first up is Deborah Klink, followed by Estrella Drake. Yes, Deborah Klink? Um, that's not on my list. So Deborah. Okay, on my list, she's first. I, unless it matters, that's what's here.
Good evening, councilmembers. Sorry, I'm a little short. I'm proud to be here. Just a little background, I'm an animal lover all my life. I'm a Thundering Herd graduate of 1975. And I started living in Elk Grove in 1999. Luckily, my husband's always loved cats. And so I've become aware of the cat crisis. It's not only in Elk Grove, but our, I think you're all aware of our cat crisis throughout the world. You know, when COVID hit, there were islands off of Brazil or whatever, where the cats were starving because the community there couldn't go feed the cats anymore. So, but anyway. Cats, the feral problem is a human problem. It's because an irresponsible human being allowed their cat not to be spayed or neutered. Or when they moved away, they left their pet cat to fend for itself. I had firsthand experience with that. About three years ago, I rescued a neighborhood cat. He was bleeding from the mouth and animal control were great. They came out and they said, we can, because we have a new Elk Grove shelter, they were able to properly give that kitty $5,000 worth of dental care. So our vet is Saint Mary, I would say. She is wonderful. She has the heart and the empathy and the skill. And we need another vet to do her work to get the spay and neuter issue under control. Because we're gonna have irresponsible people not take care of their cats. Luckily, SBCA or Bradshaw or other facilities in the county were able to address, you know, our neighborhood needs. And so I've been trapping since 2016. Couple of years ago, I got an urgent call in East SAC. My husband's an attorney and we have another house in East SAC. And I answered an urgent call. Urgent cat, somebody's killing cats and kittens at a dairy farm south of here, 20 miles of Elk Grove. I couldn't turn away because I speak Spanish. My parents immigrated from Mexico, so I'm very fluent in Spanish. So I took a bag of food and I befriended a family who were able to feed the cats. So it took me three weeks and those cats, every time I drove up to my truck, knew me. Anyway, I successfully trapped mama cat.
Thank you, ma'am.
So anyway.
Your time.
All right.
Thank you. Next up is Estrella Drake, followed by Catherine Mendoza. And as a reminder, it's three minutes.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Estrella Drake and I live in District Two. I'm here today to request that the city of Elk Grove approve the hiring of a second veterinarian at the Elk Grove Animal Shelter and additional staff and without further delays. Due to the out of control amount of community and feral cats that have exploded since COVID began due to the shutdown of animal services. Sure, COVID has now been declared over, but the truth is that it has been raining kittens for the past years due to the shutdown. It is estimated that the community cat population in Elk Grove is around 20,000 community cats and growing. As of the end of last month, I was told that the shelter has had 150 kittens in foster care. Wow. Today, I'm providing you with a postcard which I used to mail out seven years ago when I lived in Meadowview City of Sacramento and I was one of the community leaders and 11-year volunteer at Front Street Animal Shelter. And I have fostered over 95 dogs and cats. I hope this visual aid I'm providing today helps you realize the severity of the crisis we are facing. I recall sharing this with a vet back then and was told, Estrella, your card looks good, but the stats are really worse than the numbers written on the card. And you guys have the card. Please see the chart on the postcard as an example and please review the stat numbers listed. I hope this wakes you all up to what we are all requesting because it is the truth and not a waste of taxpayer money. I also want to point out a few other items. Please note and take it to heart that Elk Grove has very hardworking constituents that work regular jobs and yet wake up at 5:30 in the morning to take the pregnant cats to the shelter to only wait in line in hopes of getting a spot on spay day by 6:30 AM. And to only find out that the maximum amount in line has been met to spay and neuter because of the shortage of a veterinarian in space. For your information, trapping a homeless cat and releasing it to almost, is almost impossible to re-trap and to try and bring back and wait in line again on another day. So therefore, hiring a new vet and staff is not a waste of time since the big, hard community of Elk Grove will continue to work with the shelter as a team to get the job done. And finally, we would love for you all to not just look at the animals as someone else's problem and join the team of heroes for our voiceless animal community here in our beloved Elk Grove. Please approve and hire another vet and staff until we can get all this mess under control. Thank you and God bless Elk Grove.
Thank you.
And, and I have a little bag for you guys. That's a scrubber and in the back is some catnip. I know it's legal, so don't worry about it. Okay?
Thank you.
And consider sharing to foster or adopt a shelter cat.
Thank you. Next up is Catherine Mendoza, followed by Kimberly Mendoza.
And Catherine Mendoza and Kimberly Mendoza submitted PowerPoints that will accompany their comments. They submitted these in accordance with our policy to receive those within 24 hours in advance. For our speakers that'll be using those, you, there is a tray that has a keyboard. And so the presentation hopefully should be up for you on the screen. And then you can use the keyboard with the arrow keys to advance your slides.
Thank you. Okay, so my presentation is on friendly and unowned adult cats and asking you all to consider hiring an additional vet. Okay, just a little background information. I'm a cat mom, a foster, a trapper, a colony caretaker. I feed up to 47 cats every night in the Elk Grove and South SAC area. Since our last meeting in October 2022, the only changes that we've received is one additional spot on Monday for TNR. The maximum still remains at two each week, so it really does not affect anybody sitting here today. The check-in process has now changed from regularly, we would sit there in our cars as early as 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. Now we can check in at midnight and then come back around 8:00 o'clock. This is from their Animal Services Facebook page. Estrella just kind of touched on it. There's 150 kittens in foster care currently and there's 137 of those are under eight weeks old. So our shelter, when it was built, we had Kate Hurley come and give a, her suggestion of how the shelter should operate. I know that there's 55 cat kennels according to Sarah Humley back there. During the year when it's not busy, full of kittens, I always see that the number of adoptable cats is under 10. And I'm not too sure why the kennels always stay so empty even though there's not very many kittens coming in. But that's always the reason that we're given is there's a lot of kittens, so we have to keep those kennels open for those. So a question is, can you bring in a friendly stray cat over the age of two months to the shelter any day of the week to be admitted? The answer is no. I emailed Sarah Humley and this is the response that she had given us. We are normally told by shelter staff to put the cat back, that the cat can walk home, make it home, or you can bring it in on Monday or Thursday for TNR. These are some of the kittens that I have had to rehome by myself with no help from the shelter. This is Amelia, Powder, Biscuit and Ethan. And they were all adopted out in Elk Grove. These are some of the ways in which I advertise kittens or adult cats that do not make the cut. Adult cats don't take, they're not very, they're not taken in to the shelter often. That's just a little side note. And then just some information as well, just before my timer's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Kimberly Mendoza.
If you just use the arrow keys or the spacebar, it'll advance it as it moves through.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good evening, mayor and city councilmembers. I'm glad to be back. And we have new councilmembers since we've been here. So I'd like to get started. So just a quick review, two surgeries per household per week. And my sister and I are a trapper duo. And although we trap together, we can only take in a maximum amount of two per week here at the shelter. We can have a maximum of three people, I mean, a minimum of three people or five people on Thursdays. An additional problem is there is no weekend vet. Our vet is there Mondays and Fridays. So we don't have the TNR date for Saturday or Sunday for us that work. And it's hard to get there at the check-in time. And in addition, we need a vet there for weekend injured animals. Just recently, May 7th, a cat was found in the middle of the street and they were turned into the shelter. The cat could not walk on its own according to the post. It would have been great if we had a vet in-house. We need a second vet because when we're out there trapping large colonies, we're trapping a whole family. It's a family reunion. We have great grandma, great grandma, great grandparents, grandparents, parents, in-laws, everything are out there. There's a bunch of them. And so we need to get them all and we can't do that with only two spots a week. And as they mentioned, the kitten trends have been increasing. We've had over 700 kittens. I think it was 770 kittens that were TNR, I mean, not, that were spayed and neutered the last year. In addition, we need to have more TNR because 80% of kittens in shelters in the United States come from feral cats. So if we need to get to the root of the problem, it's the feral cats that are out there reproducing. And the next, the fiscal impact. So looking online, I see that the range of the vet could be between 120, 120,000 and 150,000. The 150,000 might be looking at newer vets that need to be paid higher because of their student loans. And it comes close to the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a three-year contract for a health and wellness coordinator in an amount not to exceed $19,320 per year. It's roughly the same amount as the wellness coordinator. So in summary, we really need a vet. One vet is not enough. And we're back to where we started before the vet was here because we have to travel a distance away to get TNR spots. And I'd like to end it with, unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Gail Platzis, followed by Paula Schlekelman. Sorry, my apologies for mispronouncing. Okay, thank you. Oh.
Our name always gets slotted. Good evening. My name is Gail and I have been in the cat welfare, not business, but I guess it is a business, so to speak, for like the last 12, since 2012. I, I've been in the audiences, but I, last time and only time I've been here addressing you was for the shelter, the Elk Grove Shelter to be built. And in 2019, that was done. We have a beautiful shelter and I wanted to thank you about that. So since then, I've gone through the good times of TNR and the bad times that we're going through right now. I don't want to repeat everything. We've been up here before about our TNR, TNR issues, trap, neuter, return. So I'm not gonna go through all that, but I want to fast forward to right, what's happening right now as the ladies before me have started on. The shelter did set up a system for us, but it's, it's proved to be not really doable. And I think one of the other gals mentioned that we have to go in at 12:00 midnight, middle of the night, which is not really feasible for many of us, I for one, to check in the cats that we have trapped for that day or the day before. And we have to go in at 12:00 midnight and register them at that time. And then we have to come back home and we have to be back there at 8:00 AM in the morning. This doesn't leave us a lot of time for any kind of sleep or rest. Then we pick them up later in the afternoon. It's not only not feasible for us, our regular trappers, but it, it makes the problem for working people and people who live far away from the shelter. And I've tried to trade many people that I have trapped for and they're all for it and until they find out about this system. What I'm trying to get started here is why they can't do this like an online thing. Today's technology, everybody does anything and everything online. And that would prevent us from having to go in there at midnight and then getting back over there by 8:00 AM the next day, which is very difficult for most of us. We have some diehards here who, they're spending half the night comparing notes. Like I have two cats for this day and I have a cat for that day and it's, we're up all night long. It's, it's not an eight to five job. It's pretty much around the clock. And so that's what I'm wondering, why, why, why? Can't we do an online thing is the main, is the main request I'm making.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just to know, feral cats matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Paula Schlekelman. Schlekel, I don't know. Schlekelman or Schlekel? You'll correct me, I know.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and councilmembers. We are here today again to visit the need for the additional TNR services through the Elk Grove Animal Shelter. Currently, as you've heard, there's 150 kittens in foster care through the Elk Grove Animal Shelter. What are the extra costs associated with housing, feeding and processing these kittens for adoption as opposed to providing more TNR services to prevent these births? These are kittens that trappers like myself have caught and brought in. They're, these are needless births that could have been prevented. There are only 16 spots available for TNR program each week between the public and us group of volunteer trappers. And we are allowed two spots per week, as you've heard. The cat population boom is getting away from us. A kitten can begin having their own kittens at four months old. Typical litters are four kittens, but I myself have found feral cat with six, a mama cat with six kittens just about five weeks ago, which we brought into the shelter. Without sufficient resources, we will never be able to get a handle on this problem. A community cat can have as many as 200 kittens over its lifetime. You do the math. A second veterinarian and additional spay and neuter spots each week will allow us to significantly reduce the problem of these unhomed cats and prevent the birth of the kittens. Currently, there is no weekend veterinarian or coverage. If the existing vet becomes ill or TNR. Currently, there is no weekend veterinarian or coverage if the existing vet becomes ill or TNR services are put on hold. Us volunteers, trappers, have been trying to work with the shelter to work through this problem. But since there are more community cats out there that need TNR, then there are spots available. We're forced to go to the SPCA and have waited in line as early as 4:00 AM to make sure we have a spot in line. Many of us trappers also feed colonies in the Elk Grove area using money from our own pockets. I myself feed about 80 cats around Elk Grove for four different colonies. When we identify a new colony that needs TNR services, the current limitations restrict how quickly we can address the fertility issues. Oftentimes, new litters are already happening before we can TNR the original cats in a colony. Feral cat lifespans are not very long, up to eight years, when things work out in their favor. When you consider predators, road hazards, starvation, and disease, the span is more often a lot less. In a perfect world for us colony caretakers, it would be nice to have only, to feed and maintain our colonies without the influx of newly found kittens and/or abandoned cats. The past weekend, I spent the better part of my Saturday and Sunday trapping a mother cat and her four kittens at the CSD Maintenance Yard in Elk Grove Park and two, happened to catch two other tomcats. I had to take the mother to the SPCA because I only had two appointments available that would be available to me on Monday. If we can get this problem addressed in a few years, we may not have the extra need, we may not have the need for the extra resources that we so desperately need right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Diane Schram Agnello. Diane? Okay. Followed by Jerry Platzis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Diane Schram Agnello. I have lived in Elk Grove for about 35 years. Currently, we live in the Bishop Ranch neighborhood near Sheldon Creek. I would like to address some concerns regarding community cats. And by doing so, strengthen the relationship with the city of Elk Grove and CSD to better benefit the community. I have been a caretaker for a cat colony for about five years. I didn't create it. It was already there. There were many unspayed and unneutered cats. Since then, I have trapped, neutered, vaccinated, adopted out, and fostered many of these cats. The colony is one of many in the Elk Grove area that has been well-established and well-maintained from an animal control perspective. Over the years, we have been working closely with Elk Grove Animal Shelter, Animal Control, and CSD to properly manage the colony. Well-maintained colonies have proven to limit the impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. Whisker Warriors, a nonprofit business dedicated to the well-being of the homeless cat community, has provided temporary shelters and feeding stations paid for by us colony caretakers. These deter the cats from seeking shelter in the residential backyards. The placement of the shelters and feeding stations were approved years ago by Elk Grove Animal Control. We recognize that not everyone likes the presence of cats. Over the years, with the help of Animal Control, we have accommodated the residences that had concerns. However, we have recently been told by CSD that the temporary shelters and feeding stations need to be removed. It would be helpful if the city and CSD had consistent policies towards the community cats. The city runs an animal shelter that provides vaccinations, neutering, and medical care for these community cats. And they are then returned to the original colony location, where many dedicated Elk Grove residents continue to care for the cats. Without clear policies in place to support the shelter's efforts to control the community cat population, the efforts of these volunteers, the money that they invest are moot. The, the city of Elk Grove is growing. The feral cat population is growing. And we need the animal shelter to grow with it. We need the city to provide the necessary resources to the shelter. We need a second vet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Jerry Platzis, followed by Randy Becker, who will be our last speaker unless somebody else submits a card.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. What I have here is, um, comments from a petition that's going around. And as of, uh, today, there are 824 signatures on this petition. And the petition is for another vet and another vet tech. So, Dana J., "I'm a trapper and we need resources to be able to help us help the cats, kittens, and community. Much better than we're able to now. At every turn, we are told there isn't help for, uh, for us because there's no resources available. There needs to be more staff to help the injured kitties that are trapped. Right now, we are having to deal with out-of-pocket, our own out-of-pocket, and find a source of help when we are already going above and beyond in trapping." Paula S. says, "Definitely, we need to hire another vet and vet tech, uh, staff and, uh, community, which the community needs." "The, the low cost of spay-neuter clinic is booked out for more than a month during the kitten season, which is upon us soon." Barbara D., "There, there must be an effort to be proactive in curbing the exploding pet population crisis in Elk Grove." Kate says, "It's not just people who get sick and injured on weekends, and one cannot expect animals and their people to schedule when things happen." Marlene, "Uh, there's a significant need for additional vet, vet in the Elk Grove District." It goes on. There, there are a couple more, but pretty much it's all the same thing. I want to say, you have no idea how much time and how much money these ladies are spending on this for not only the cats, but Elk Grove community. It is an unbelievable amount of money. So, you know, whatever you can do to help them, definitely be appreciated.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next up is Randy Becker.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. It is good to hear that the five of you have decided to defend the lawsuit from the state and the Attorney General. Old Town USA, anywhere you go, is important for those residents and to keep historical values. Almost every city that you go into will have something like the OTSBA. Oak Rose Apartments would not be built in Old Sacramento. Absolutely wouldn't be. Wouldn't be built in Old Folsom or Old Jackson. Nowhere. It is important because we, as a city, have decided that we want to take care of low-income housing. We want to take care of those that are less fortunate. And the five of you and the preceding council did something about it. It's too bad, as we became a city, that that council didn't make our city an actual city instead of a bunch of homes. We wouldn't be in this mess. Elk Grove is not Huntington Beach. It's not even close. To have somebody that is elected stand before the TV monitors and try to run to be our next governor instead of coming down here and sitting down with us to know what the hell we've, we are doing and what we're going to do, he's derelict of his duties. Derelict. And those that you run into at all these functions that you go to, that's exactly what should be taking place. Anyone that supports the AG ought to get off their butt, get out of the front of the TVs, and come down here and have a conversation. Because the Oak Rose Apartments could be better, but they want to hold on to a small area that is a for-profit business. Make no mistake, they're doing it for a profit. So, I got to question their integrity compared to ours. Because we've got the land, we're willing to negotiate. But they needs to get off his ass and get down here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, that is our final speaker for public comment. So, I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. I, Ms. Sarah Humbley is available if anyone had any additional questions. Um, but I am interested, at least on one, this is a non-agendized item, so we really can't get into specifics regarding most of the public comments that we've heard. But in terms of the online registration, um, Sarah, where are you? I don't have my glasses on. Okay, thank you. If we can look at that, um, that, I mean, that's just a quality of life issue. And given where technology's at, so I would certainly be interested in, in making that process a lot easier. I know that I will continue to have conversations with staff on what relief that we can have. So, these will be part of ongoing discussions with our city council. So, I can't give you any commitments since this is a non-agendized item. But, uh, we hear you. We've received your emails. And we will do our part to navigate through that and hopefully find something that, uh, is a win-win for everyone. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank all of you for, for your hard work and dedication to our community and the animals out there.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for all of your efforts. So, with that, I will transition over to our next item. Thank you all for coming this evening. Is our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. A few items to report on this evening. First of all, we have our weed abatement crew is now on duty, which is lots of sheep as well as goats. So, you can go on our website and find out where they're going to be. I know a lot of our residents love seeing them hard at work in our, our channels and creeks and, and keeping, knocking down the, uh, the weeds and the tall grasses. So, especially this year with all the rains that we had. So, they're out there, um, in, in great numbers. Our Public Works Director, Jeff Warner, talked about Big Truck Day, so I think we've got that. But certainly encourage everybody to attend, which is next Wednesday, May 17th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM in the Aquatic Center parking lot out of District 56. Some congratulations are in order. The city of Elk Grove's Public Affairs Multimedia Team took home the California Association of Public Information Officials. Capio top website honors the epic award. Last week, during Capio's annual conference, staff redesigned the 1,500-page site based on feedback from a cross-section of community members. Changes enhance the user experience, introduce new data-driven improvements to the user interface, and enhance the site's accessibility for all users. If you haven't seen the site lately, check it out at elkgrovecity.org. On Monday this week, the city and the Kasunus Community Services District held the first Measure E Citizens Oversight Committee meeting. The first meeting included an introduction of new members, a review of the Brown Act, as well as a detailed overview of proposed FY24 project expenditures. The city council reviewed the Measure E budget during the city's budget presentation at the next city council meeting. The city's new event series, Fridays in the Grove, kicked off on May 5th with silent disco at Old Town Plaza. Despite the colder weather, residents came out and had a great time. The next event of the series is a movie night at District 56 on Friday, May 19th at 7:00 PM. Finally, uh, an update from the last meeting. On April 26th, seven residents spoke at the council meeting expressing their concern regarding an event hosted by the Elk Grove Historical Society that occurred last week. Since that meeting, city staff held a preliminary conversation with representatives from that organization. We will be reaching out to residents shortly to determine a path forward for a conversation between residents, historical society representatives, members of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission, as well as the mayor and council member Brewer. So, that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right. Thank you for that excellent report and want to thank and recognize staff for your hard work in reaching out to the Historical Society and help navigate those conversations, which are so important. And so, I look forward to the next steps and hopefully having a meeting with the organizers and members of our community to find a workable solution for everyone. Thank you for, um, helping with those efforts. Any questions, comments?
Just a quick congratulations to our Public Affairs Multimedia Team on your award. That's great news.
All right. Seeing no other questions or comments, we'll move on to our next item, which is our consent calendar. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anyone signed up, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve our consent calendar.
Move Consent.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Next item, item 8.1.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Alicia Tutt, your housing and grant specialist. I'm here tonight with our Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, which serves as the annual budget and implementing document for the program and is required by HUD to receive our 2023-24 funding. This is a standard item that we bring to you each year. You had previously weighed in on the allocations during the March 22nd meeting, to which, after we released the action plan for a 30-day public review period, since that time, we have not received any written public comments on this item. Um, and with that, the action plan was included as part of your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Thank you. Um, at this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anyone signed up, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. Are there any questions or comments from colleagues? All right. I look for a motion.
Move the resolution to adopt the resolution.
Second.
I think, uh, Councilmember Brewer beat you, sir, so. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is item 8.2.
8.2 is actually a series of five public hearings, but I'll let staff detail all the nuance of these items.
I agree. It is a lot. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Renee Atar, Finance Analyst for the city. I'm here this evening with a presentation for proposed annexations into the city's special tax districts. So, as you know, the city maintains eight special tax districts, which provide funding for infrastructure for services such as police, maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting, and stormwater drainage. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of a new development project's approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary according to the geographic location and building use. Um, and special taxes are subject to annual rate adjustments. So, on March 22nd, um, the city council adopted resolutions of intent to annex the parcels for the Mosher-Madera South Village 4, Bo Stockton Apartment, and Sheldon Place Center projects into the special tax districts and to, uh, to establish tonight's public hearings. The projects are being proposed for annexation into the following various special tax districts. CFD 2003-2 for police services, CFD 2006-1 for maintenance services, Street Maintenance District Number 1, Zone 3 and 5 for local collector and arterial street maintenance, Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2 for stormwater drainage and runoff maintenance. This is the 67th annexation into CFD 2003-2, the 90th annexation into CFD 2006-1, the 49th annexation into Street Maintenance District 1, Zone 3, the 28th annexation into Street Maintenance District Zone 1, sorry, District 1, Zone 5, and the 60th annexation to Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2. All of these assessments will be levied in perpetuity. So, the first project is called Mosher, which consists of 57 single-family units located southwest of Poppy Ridge Road and Vicorn Boulevard. This project's parcel was annexed into Laguna Ridge, CFD 2005-1 on March 22nd. The second parcel or project is Madera South Village 4, which is right next to Mosher and consists of 51 single-family units located southwest of Poppy Ridge Road. located southwest of Poppy Ridge Road and Vicorn Boulevard as well. This project's parcel was actually included in the Laguna Ridge, CFD 2005-1 district when it was formed. The third project is Bo Stockton Apartments, which consists of 144 multifamily units located northeast of I-99 and Sheldon Boulevard. I'm sorry, Sheldon Road. And then the last project is kind of across the street. It's Sheldon Place Center, which consists of 3.6 non-residential acres located southeast of I-99 and Sheldon Road. This project was annexed into CFD 2006-1 and Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2 in April of 2018. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. I will declare the public hearing for CFD 2003-2 Annex 67 open and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anyone signed up, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD 2003-2 Annex 67 is closed. And look for motion A1.
Motion A1.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
With Councilmember Brewer absent for this vote. May I request the results of the ballot tabulation, please?
Of 252 possible votes, 252 affirmative votes were cast authorizing the City of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. Measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. Resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Thank you. Motion A2, please.
Motion A2.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion A3, introducing and waiving the full reading by substitution of title only in ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax in the 67th Annexation to Community Facilities District Number 2003-2 Police Services and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.18.010.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And for the record, may it reflect that motion A2, Councilmember Brewer, was present and voted. All right, our second public hearing, CFD 2006-1 Annex 90. I will declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 Annex 90 open and open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up. I'll close the public opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 Annex 90 closed.
Motion B1.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and may I request the results of the ballot tabulation?
Indeed, of 144 possible votes, 144 affirmative votes were cast authorizing the City of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. Resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Motion B2.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion B3, introducing and waiving the full reading by substitution of title only in ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax in Territory Annex to the Community Facilities District Number 2006-1 Maintenance Services, Annexation Number 90 and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.19.010.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, our third public hearing. I will declare the public hearing for SMD 3-AL Annex 49 open and open up the public comment opportunity. No one has signed up. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SMD 3-AL Annex 49 is closed. And request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest. Of 148 possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for the properties, 148 affirmative votes were returned. The ballots approved the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion C, adopt the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we're on to our fourth public hearing. I will declare the public hearing for SMD 5-Y Annex 28 open and open up the public comment opportunity. No one has signed up. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SMD 5-Y Annex 28 closed. And request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
And again, there is no majority protest. Of 108 possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property, 108 affirmative votes were returned. The ballots approved the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion D, adopt the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we are on to our fifth public hearing. I will declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 60 open and open up the public comment opportunity. No one has signed up, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 60 is closed. And request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest. Of six possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property, six affirmative votes were returned. The ballots approved the proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limits described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion D, adopt the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public hearings, and we will go on to item 9.1. Consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Measure E Tax Sharing Agreement with the Kasunus Community Services District.
I think we're fighting each other with the mouse. I'll let you drive.
Let me pull it up and get everything set up. Take it away, sir.
There it is. All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Jason Barham, the city manager, my pleasure to present this item to you tonight. I want to recognize our friends, our partners at CSD who are in the audience tonight. We have Joshua Green, who's outgoing general manager at CSD. Phil Lewis, incoming general manager at the CSD. And we have Chief Ray and Chief Quiggle back there as well, so appreciate their partnership. I also want to recognize many people in this room and those not in this room as well, including those up on the dais who worked very hard the last several years in getting this important tax measure passed for our community, for the improvements in the quality of life that is going to make, it really will make a difference. And because of this collaborative effort that we undertook jointly with the CSD, I'm proud and pleased to present this tax sharing agreement to you tonight with them. So I'm going to go through just briefly some a little bit about the history. I know you've lived this history with me, so I'm not going to spend much time on it, but we did a lot of community engagement, a lot of polling. And the measure was crafted around the feedback we heard directly from our residents, and that was really important. And you all voted to put this tax measure on the ballot last July. And it was approved by Elk Grove voters by a vote of 54% to 45%. You had the privilege of certifying those election results in December of '22. This is just a snapshot of some of the outreach that we undertook over that period of time. Lot of different groups, lot of meetings, and then even after it was passed. We had four community outreach meetings at District 56. You can see the dates and the topics where we wanted to hear more from residents about, okay, now that this has passed and you heard the priorities, what are some of the programs, projects, areas that we should focus in on? And so we heard that, we got the feedback, and then we went to work as staff from the city and the CSD in developing programs, project services, staffing areas that would help to address these needs that you see right here. These are the priorities that came out of all the community engagement that was done and that was supported by the polling that was done. It was included on the tax measure language itself. We're all familiar with these, but those are the main areas. And what you see in the measure itself and the expenditure plan that we're presenting to you and in the tax sharing agreement is a very strict commitment to following the voice of the people and what the people said that they wanted and what was most important to them in delivering services, improving those services in our community. So in order to do that, we know that the city provides important services in our community, but so does the CSD. And so from that list of community priorities, several things on here are CSD-provided services. And so we have been working with CSD staff as well as through our two-by-two committee, our mayor and vice mayor and their board leadership, as well as staff, in developing the parameters of what that tax sharing agreement would look like. Again, all in alignment with those priorities from the polling, from what the community said. I attended the CSD board meeting last week where Josh presented the tax sharing agreement to his board, and it was approved on a vote of 4-0 unanimously. There was one of the board members that was absent. As you all are aware, these funds are collected, they're actually collected through the state. They're remitted then to the city. It's a city tax. But through this tax sharing measure, we would then remit the CSD's share allocated to them on a monthly basis. As we receive it, we would then turn their portion over to them. As kind of stewards over this tax, we remain responsible for ensuring that there is accountability. And so as you noted, or I noted earlier tonight, we had our Measure E Oversight Committee that we will run. CSD was there with us to present information, and we maintain accountable to the citizens through that oversight committee. As far as the term on the agreement, there is no term. Remain in perpetuity unless canceled by either the city or the district, and it requires at least two years' notice in order to do that. So this is the general parameter framework of how the agreement is set up. First of all, 20% is set aside for future needs and services in the community. As we all know, the needs that are here today may not be the same needs five years, 10 years from now. And so we want to make sure we're setting money aside for those things that might come up in our ability to pivot and adjust and address those needs as they might change. So with the remaining 80% of the funds, 62.5% would be allocated for city services and 37.5% to CSD services. From the CSD's percentage, that 37.5, about two-thirds of that will go to fire protection services and a third will go for parks and recreation services. And you can see the percentages here and the dollar amounts. These are based on the current projection that we have for the sales tax revenue in the first year. We won't know until we get into the year and understand exactly whether we are over or under that estimate, but that's what we're using right now. So if it was broken down there, you can see the dollar amounts. And at the bottom, the estimate that we have right now, the allocation of the CSD in year one, would be $4.5 million for fire protection services and $2.25 million for parks and recreation services. The agreement leaves complete discretion to the city on the remaining funds. And so the city council retains the ability to direct those funds as you see fit. Our recommendation to you that you will see in more detail at the next meeting on the 24th will outline all of the expenditures that we're proposing. But this is a general framework of what those are going to look like. And again, these are aligning back with community priorities, what they said, the polling, everything else that we've done. So for the city's allocation, this is the general breakdown of how we see it working. And the programs you'll see in two weeks will align with these. So crime reduction, rapid response, about 40% of those funds, $4.5 million. That aligns with the amount that's for fire protection services as well. Addressing homelessness, we know is a big priority, so 18% or a little over $2 million towards that. Street maintenance, $1.8 million. Traffic, 900,000 economic development, one and a half. Youth gang prevention, two and a quarter in clean and safe public areas, also two and a quarter for a total of about $11.25 million. Again, this is the CSD allocation, four and a half for the fire, two and a quarter for youth gang crime prevention. It's really going to be a partnership in a lot of ways between the city and the CSD, and you'll see that in other areas as well. And then park maintenance, a little over $2 million. And again, the CSD does retain discretion of moving funds around within its, as it sees fit. We're not going to dictate how it spends its share and its portion generally allocated to the two-thirds, one-third between fire and parks. But beyond that, they retain discretion on how they spend those funds. So the recommendation before you is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Measure E Tax Sharing Agreement with the CSD. And just as a little summary as well here, again, at the next meeting, we'll present to you more details about what the Measure E expenditure plan is going to look like. And then it'll come to you for final approval at the budget adoption on June 14th. And then we should start getting our first payments into June into July. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right, well, thank you for that excellent presentation. Before we get into any questions and answers, I'll open up the public comment opportunity. I don't see anyone sign up, so I'll close the public comment opportunity. I do want to thank CSD for the collaborative process. As our city manager outlined, I was a part of those meetings along with our vice mayor. And we really used the equity lens in having our robust and meaningful discussions to where we got to this sort of process. So just want to thank everyone that was involved. We are in this together. This is what true teamwork looks like. And I was honored and privileged to be a part of that process. So just thank you, and just seeing all of the work that's gone on in the last year is quite remarkable. It really is. So just kudos to everyone that was involved. Any questions or comments? I'll start to my left. Questions or comments?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just also want to commend the CSD for their partnership in efforts to not only bring this to fruition, but in the collaboration to divide. That's always the next battle, right, is to divide how the revenue will be spent and allocated. So thank you for that. I both, I also want to thank Jason and city staff, mayor, vice mayor, all your work on this as well. I think it's very prudent to put aside 20% savings right off the top. I think that's very wise. And then I just want to congratulate Phil, Phil Lewis, on your role. So look forward to working with you more on that. And congrats to you, Josh. Thank you.
So sharing revenue is always a tricky conversation, right? And it provides a lot of opportunity for disagreement. But I want to be sure to thank CSD leadership, as well as specifically the CSD board, because we had very fruitful conversations. We had a framework by which we had a conversation on how we could do this so that it was fair for everyone. Because in the end, you certainly want to be, you want the public to feel trust because you can work, you see two agencies working together for mutual benefit and for the benefit of our shared constituents, which are the citizens of Elk Grove. So thank you very much, Jason. That's, I know you had a lot of work. I know you and Josh had a lot of work to get that done, and so thank you very much.
Councilmember Brewer?
So we're providing a path forward, and this is a very fair agreement on both sides. And this is obviously, we would like to say this was all a year brewing in the making, but this is really five years in the making. Josh and myself had been talking about looking for ways to make sure that the City of Elk Grove and the Kasunus Community Services District look for ways to keep ourselves out of the pit of any sort of recession that may come our way within the next five to 10 years. Measure E represents that. It gives us the tools and the resources that we need to effectively serve Elk Grove and the people that live in Elk Grove and Galt, but really the people in Elk Grove. Gives us an opportunity to effectively serve our community. So with that, thank you, Jason, and the team of Elk Grove. Thank you, Josh, and the team of Kasunus. Because this is really our best foot forward to show that we are working together. Our relationship has been very fruitful over the last five, six years, but really over the last three, four years, under Josh's leadership as general manager, Jason's leadership as city manager, we have seen very successful relations between the city and Kasunus. And the people here in Elk Grove see that, they notice that, they feel that. And that's why they put their faith in us in passing Measure E. That's why we have this tax sharing agreement. Because this is really our way of saying, thank you. We will not let you down. We will continue to work for you and to continue to deliver for you. So with that, I definitely want to thank everyone involved, because this is truly a step in the right direction.
Councilmember Robles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. They must have taken all my talking points because I had all that down, and I was going to say all that. No.
You were looking at your paper.
Jason, just thank you for presenting this. And Josh, thank you for working closely with Jason on trying to figure out and compromising and making sure ultimately this is to benefit our community. It's all going to go back into our community, and that's what matters the most. The residents who voted for it and the residents who didn't vote for it, everyone. vote for it, everyone's going to see the outcome of Measurie and they're going to reap the benefits of it. And that's something that it boils down to. I'm pretty excited to see what will come about this and pretty excited to see how our community is going to definitely grow and advance in this. So thank you for all the hard work. Thank you to staff for all the hard work and we appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. And I'd be remiss if I didn't also congratulate Phil Lewis in your new role. And then saying goodbye to our friend Josh Green. We know that this is just the beginning. So it's, we're looking forward to our continuous collaborations over the coming years. And congratulations to both of you in your new respective roles. So with that, I'll look for a motion.
So Mood, I'd like to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Measure E tax sharing agreement with the Casumas Community Services District.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next item, item 9.2.
While it is tempting to use a different greeting, I will restrain myself. So good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Sam Grimm, Senior Civil Engineer in the Capitol Program. I'm here tonight to present an update on the 9260 Elk Grove Boulevard Library Improvements Project and bring forward several actions for your consideration. For some background, in 2018, staff performed the Library and Cultural Arts Center Study, which among several findings identified the need for a larger library branch. In 2021, council authorized the purchase of 9260 Elk Grove Boulevard, the former Rite Aid building. Later that year, the Sacramento Public Library Authority and the city partnered to initiate conceptual and schematic design work with Group Four as the first step towards relocating the library from its current location in Old Town to the new location on the corner of Waterman Road and Elk Grove Boulevard. Council then received a presentation from staff in December of 2021, which provided a summary of public outreach events, building floor plan, conceptual and schematic design work in progress, and design themes. This early design work was used to apply for two separate California State Library grants. And in 2022, former Assemblymember Cooper secured $3 million for the project in a targeted state grant. And earlier this year, the city was awarded over $4 million with the Building Forward Library Infrastructure Grant. Now this project's scope includes renovating the existing building on the corner of Elk Grove Boulevard and Waterman Road. It includes a full reconstruction of the interior with minor building and exterior improvements. This new location provides additional building square footage, additional parking, and the opportunity to expand services for the community. We developed this library program based on information gathered during the early design phase, which included community input, input from the design team, city staff, and library stakeholders. And when you first enter the library, you'll see the entry space, the marketplace, and the Friends of the Library bookstore. Here will be the service desk, self-checkout, book drop, bookstore, and marketplace for popular materials, including rotating seasonal collections. Meeting spaces will include a large assembly room as well as four smaller group study rooms. Next, we have what we are calling the incubator space. This is a flexible classroom-style area that is adaptable over time. It can be used for DIY activities, arts crafts, and health-related classes. The adult space will have a traditional physical book collection and comfortable seating. The teen space will have furniture to create a fun and vibrant environment for collaborative group work and individual study. And the children's space is full of excitement in every corner with the children's collection and vibrant furniture. Now this is the floor plan overview, where we bring together all the programs through the conceptual and schematic design process. North is on the right-hand side of the screen with Elk Grove Boulevard and east is on the bottom with Waterman Road. Note, the main entrance has not changed from its current position. The colorful shaded areas represent all of the programs just discussed, while the gray sections indicate the back of house and staff areas. The marketplace is intended to be the central core of the library with access to all of the areas. Here is the cost estimate from the initial design work based on the floor plan overview. The table shown here provides a full estimate of anticipated costs, including contingencies and escalation, bringing the total to just over $15 million. Staff is proposing to fully fund the project centered around the two grant awards with support from the CCF Library Fund, Library Ownership Fund, and the General Fund. The table here shows our current budget and proposed funding to match our full estimated costs. Staff is recommending executing a professional services contract with Group Four to complete the final design, get the project ready for advertising, and provide design support during construction. Group Four has extensive background knowledge with the city, including completing the Library and Cultural Arts Center Study and completing the conceptual and schematic design services for this project. They are also well-suited to perform the work as they have experience with California State Library grant requirements and experience with design decisions made to date. Group Four has demonstrated the ability to deliver quality professional services at fair and competitive prices. Staff has negotiated a scope of services included in the professional services contract for your consideration. Following tonight's actions, staff will begin the final design phase anticipated to take 12 months. Bidding an award of the construction contract is scheduled for the summer of 2024. Construction is scheduled to begin in August of 2024 with a one-year total duration for interior and exterior improvements. This schedule allows us to spend the grant funds within the allotted time. For tonight's actions, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution accepting the targeted state grant funds for the project, dispensing with the formal request for proposal procedure, and authorize the professional services contract with Group Four, amending the fiscal year '22-'23 budget by removing 1.57 million in grant funds and adding 1.6 million in targeted state grant funds, and amending the fiscal year 2022-2027 capital improvement program. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you for that excellent presentation. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. We have one speaker signed up, Jeff Rubin.
Hi, Jeff. Long time no see.
Good evening, Darren. How are you?
Good.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and staff. My name is Jeff Rubin. I'm a 30-year resident of Elk Grove and I currently serve as Vice President of the Elk Grove Friends of the Library. The Friends are your community nonprofit group supporting public library programs and services designed to add to our city's cultural and educational life. In addition, we work to strengthen public awareness and use of the library and raise funds for our branch here in Elk Grove. I'm here tonight to lend support and speak in favor of the city's plans to move forward to the acceptance of the targeted state grant and the execution of the contract with Group Four. I've had the opportunity to stand before the council quite often over the last dozen or so years to provide updates on the status of the Elk Grove and Franklin Branch libraries, particularly the need for the city to provide state-of-the-art facilities within which the SPL can continue to offer quality public library services. I've always found this council open and receptive to our ideas and requests as budgeted resources are available. I am excited that the council has purchased the former Rite Aid drugstore building to relocate the current outdated Elk Grove library branch. I am also most grateful that you have previously authorized staff to engage Group Four planning to conduct studies and evaluate the specific needs for public library services in this growing community. Our organization looks forward to continuing to work with them and Jason, Chris, and other exemplary city staff. With your acceptance of these funds and awarding this contract, you demonstrate your ongoing commitment to making Elk Grove a desired place to live, work, and learn. As the mayor said in her state of the city address, we have come a long way in the past year. We are most grateful that a new public library facility will be part of the infrastructure of one of California's finest cities. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you, sir. All right. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and open it for any questions or comments. I'll start to the right. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say, Samuel, thank you for this presentation. I'm pretty excited. I got a little bit excited as you were talking about the library. I love books. I love reading books. I actually was at the Franklin Library. So I'm pretty excited about this. And it's going to be in Councilmember Brewer's district. So it's going to be awesome. But it's for all Elk Grove, Darren. I know you're looking at me. So this is going to be a fun thing. So, thank you.
Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you. No, I want to thank Sam for the presentation. And I definitely want to thank Jeff for your work and your leadership with the Friends of the Library. Because I think what we're going to experience and what we're going to see over the next few years, especially when it gets finally put together, is going to be a nice example for the Sacramento region of what a good quality library can do in affecting the lives of all of its community members. Because there's, one of the things that I've learned since being on the Sacramento Public Library Board, along with Councilmember Robles and Vice Mayor Spees, is that the Sacramento library started here in Elk Grove. And that was something I didn't really sink in and absorb until I started doing my own research and looking at the Free Library on Elk Grove Boulevard, which is the Grange Hall, which is, that shows you like where everything really started with the Free Library. And when we learn the history and the meaning of that, that makes the location where we're putting it even more valuable and even more cherished. And so I'm really excited about how this is going to turn out because we're going to have a state-of-the-art 21st century library. It will have features that adults and children will equally enjoy. And it's going to be a nice centerpiece for the city. Because we have the Toby Johnson Library to the west, we're going to have the Elk Grove Library to the east. And it's going to be something that everyone can enjoy and everyone can be a part of. And I can't be more proud of having this coming together tonight, at least the opening stages of it. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Suen?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm just excited to see this come to fruition as well. You know, we've been talking about it, as you see in the staff report, since 2018 of the need. And finally, you'll be able to acquire it. And thank you to former Assemblymember Cooper, now Sheriff Cooper, for giving us the money to take it to the next step. So I'm excited for it as well for the entire city, Councilmember Robles.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. You know, a lot of folks nowadays still think of libraries as just books. And a lot of folks think, eh, just books. What's the deal? But what we found throughout, before the pandemic and during, was that it was a place for people to meet and for people to, like you saw on the presentation, thank you very much, Sam, I appreciate it. It shows that, you know, there's a workspace for people. There's areas for teens to gather and a quieter space for adults. And, you know, to have a workspace where some crafts can be done or some, you know, some small projects and things like that. Libraries have evolved from what we, what I remember. I'll speak to my age, I guess. And so it really, oh yeah, you're snickering a little too loud down there. But I'm really glad to see that the city of Elk Grove is able to do this. And I think it's going to be an exciting feature for all of Elk Grove.
Absolutely. What everyone said. Thank you to Sheriff Cooper for helping facilitate those much-needed grants. This is a very important civic amenity that the entire city will enjoy. And so, very proud of that. And, you know, you mentioned in your presentation, Mr. Grimm, of the opportunity to grow. And that's not just with the library site itself, but around it. That we want to have opportunities to not only grow as, you know, as our city grows, but our needs continue to grow, as we've seen with the current location. We outgrew that before it even opened. And so it's exciting to see these renderings. They're captivating. They're amazing. The marketplace is a place that I look forward to visiting. And yes, libraries have evolved. And it's just really wonderful to see this coming to that part of our, you know, the part of our city as an extension out of our historic area on Waterman. And really bringing a much-needed civic amenity on the east side of our city. As our city continues to have civic amenities throughout, it's wonderful to see that we have something like this as an anchor out there. So thank you to our sheriff for facilitating this and getting us some of the funding, but looking forward to those next steps coming forward. So thank you to the Friends of the Library for always being so passionate on this issue and making sure that it is front and center. Because, believe it or not, sometimes these, you know, libraries can easily get ignored. And as someone who served on the school board, I know that all too well when it comes to libraries and even library positions and some of the other things. So it's, this is important work and a welcome addition to, an extension to our city. So thank you. And with that, I will look for a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to adopt the resolution to, one, accept the targeted site, targeted state grant for the 9260 Elk Grove Boulevard Library Improvement Project in the amount of $3 million and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents. And then dispensing with the formal request for proposal procedure pursuant to Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.42.140B3 and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Group Four Architecture Research and Planning, Inc. Incorporated for professional services for design development through construction administration for the project in an amount not exceeding $1.529 million or $1,529,559 and authorizing amendments to the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget and fiscal year 2022 through 2027 capital improvement program as described.
Bless you for reading all of that, Sam. We have a motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And we will move on to our next item, item 9.3. Receive information and provide direction to staff regarding converting 13 contract positions to city positions in the Public Works Department.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Kristen Parsons. I'm your Deputy Public Works Director for Engineering. And with me tonight is Sean Gallagher, the Deputy Public Works Director for Operations. And as the mayor mentioned, we're here to talk about staff conversions throughout Public Works. Since incorporation, the city has operated under a contract model where we relied on many essential services to be provided by consultants and contractors. The contract model has been particularly prominent in the Public Works and Development Services Departments. Since 2008, four reports and audits have been prepared, which analyzed and assessed the need for conversion to city staff, identified issues associated with the contract model, assessed our established performance measures, and identified the need for improvement of contractor oversight. These were common threads throughout each of the reports. And in addition to identifying the need to convert, they also discussed how the city would realize substantial annual savings, gain better controls over workload and expenditures, move to a preventive maintenance approach, and enhance internal controls for contractor and consultant engagement. In 2017, the city reviewed the audit findings and analyzed our current contract model structure, budget, and performance. The response to the audit made additional recommendations for achieving efficiencies and cost savings, which included improved controls over contracts, improved maintenance of city-owned infrastructure, a focus on preventive rather than reactive maintenance. And what was common through all of this was the need to convert core In February of 2019, council approved the conversion of 12 contract positions to city positions in the O and M Division. Two years later, council approved the conversion of eight positions Two years later, council approved the conversion of eight positions in the Engineering Services Division. O&M's conversion has resulted in more than $1 million in savings annually and the ability to recruit skilled and knowledgeable staff, which leads to many additional improvements. We've not been able to complete a full analysis of the ESD conversion as of yet. That was partially due to the challenges we faced this last year in filling vacant positions with qualified professional engineers. And that was exacerbated also by staff turnover during COVID-19 throughout the city. As of April 2023, however, all ESD conversions have been completed. And this will enable us to assess the total cost savings as well as the organizational benefits realized. However, early results do indicate that similar benefits that we saw in O&M are being realized with those conversions. This includes cost savings over comparable consultant-provided services and control over hiring, which allows the city to recruit more skilled and knowledgeable staff. So the Public Works Department provides critical services. We've talked about some of these tonight. They include engineering, design, operation, maintenance, repair, replacement, and expansion of the city's transportation, stormwater drainage, facility, and vehicle infrastructures. We also manage the collection of residential and commercial solid waste, and we operate the Special Waste Collection Center. The city is growing and expanding its assets and services. And to continue providing the highest level of service possible and to ensure seamless and efficient operations, we must be staffed adequately. Based on the success of the O&M and the ESD conversions within the Public Works Department and the successful conversion of planning positions in the Development Services Department, combined with the city's continued growth and demand for high levels of service and project delivery, the Public Works Department seeks to continue this success by transitioning additional services currently performed by contractors into city staff. By removing the consultant, and I apologize, that was actually the wrong slide I've had up this whole time. I thought that got deleted. This should have been the slide. Similar, but it shows you a better comparison of when we remove the consultant from the model. Those, it really shows the significance of those core positions, the project managers being engineers, our real estate group with the real property manager, and maintenance positions. It really helps us to increase our efficiencies and increase our ability to maintain that high level of service necessary. Gives us better control. So we are recommending the conversion of 13 core-level positions throughout public works. Those are listed here. These 13 full-time equivalents are necessary in order to provide the core level of citywide services, regardless of workload and economy, while still maintaining a high level of service. And they represent the minimum number of personnel necessary to perform day-to-day tasks through various economic fluctuations. Financial and organizational benefits would result from the service model conversions. And these align with the council priority here to identify opportunities and implement more efficient and cost-effective delivery of public works operations and maintenance services. Many other benefits in addition to the financial savings include removing efficiencies in the consultant model, as I've mentioned, providing in-house control over resource management, and increased capacity for project delivery, sustainability, critical, and succession planning within CIP and throughout the department. This also helps us achieve staff, better staff retention. So this exhibit depicts what we have currently and proposed in our CIP Division. So in addition to the three existing full-time employees shown in green, seven additional full-time city employees, FTEs, are needed to manage the variety and the volume of the projects which are identified in the city's five-year capital improvement program. These positions are currently filled by consultants, the ones shown in blue. These staff are anticipated to provide service at a level equal to or greater than that provided by the consultants in prior years, which is necessary to ensure projects are delivered on time and within budget. The model shown here would provide for three CIP teams, as you can see in each of the three columns, and would consist of a senior civil engineer, who would report to the CIP Division Manager. And each of those senior civil engineers would supervise an associate civil engineer and an assistant engineer. The current model is no longer sustainable or beneficial without a major downshift in workload and project delivery expectations. And we believe the conversion to core city staff in the CIP Division is essential to the immediate and long-term success of the division. The comparative analysis in this table shows that for an equivalent level of seven consultant CIP full-time employees, the cost would be approximately $725,000 higher than the cost for seven city CIP full-time employees with the equivalent ability and experience. So this represents a pretty substantial cost savings to the city. In the Engineering Services Division, our Construction Management Section has used consultants to fill an associate civil engineer level position for several years now. This position assists the senior civil engineer in the Construction Management Section and performs a large variety of functions. They oversee CIP construction projects. They act as a resident engineer in some cases and support a number of other functions within the ESD. The need to convert this position is justified by the ongoing use of consultant staff to provide these services. The position is considered core staffing, and the conversion comes with a savings of more than $100,000 compared to the consultant rate. This position will also be able to provide direct construction management services for inspection and as a resident engineer, should there be a decline in the number of projects in construction in future years, thereby insulating that position from having a reduced workload and providing potential additional cost savings not factored in here. Moving on to our real property section, the real estate management services for the city have been provided by a consultant since incorporation. The real estate manager position oversees all aspects of the city's real estate asset portfolio. They provide vision, expertise, and direction to all departments. They develop and maintain strategic plans, provides project planning and oversight, acquires, manages, and administers all of the city's real estate assets, and mitigates legal and fiscal risk to the city. These are critical functions for the city and should therefore be staffed by, as a city position. And this conversion also comes with an annual savings of nearly $50,000 compared to the consultant rate. So at this point, I will turn the presentation over to my counterpart, Sean Gallagher, to finish up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Sean Gallagher, Deputy Director of Public Works overseeing the operations divisions. And I'm going to talk about the four positions that we're proposing within the Operations and Maintenance Division. The city's assets are beginning to age. Many of these were built in a relatively short period of time, which means funding and maintenance levels were really low for many years. And at this time, many of them are reaching their useful life and are needing replacement or upgrade at this time. So in some of our areas, like traffic signals, roadways, signage, drainage, and our landscaping divisions, we're seeing a lot of this infrastructure start to get to that point where it needs to be upgraded. This additional work requires additional staffing, and it requires knowledge of this kind of infrastructure. The Operations and Maintenance Division has experienced troubles with some of their contractors finding skilled labor to do some of the more skilled tasks that we look for. Some of the positions that we're going to be proposing here are really core-level technical positions. These staff are performing the most skilled labor in the field. The traffic signal technicians need to be highly skilled as we advance this network. The maintenance specialist, who is overseeing our sign-making program and ensuring that the signs are up to date, keeping them to code with the MUTCD. Our senior maintenance technician, who is going to be working both in our signs and marking as well as our street maintenance to help reduce the workload of the supervisor, who is seeing a workload that's three times greater than any of our other field supervisors. And then our maintenance technician, which will be working within our landscaping division and really assisting with some of our newer facilities that we've built, like District 56 and Old Town Plaza, to really help bring a higher level of service at a much lower cost. And as you can see here from the table, it's about an annual savings of $363,000 a year. If this was to be proposed, each of these positions, I know it says five vehicles. It's supposed to say four, will be needed for that. That is an additional cost. In that previous table, those vehicles maintenance and future replacement costs are included in that table. But there will be an initial purchase of those vehicles. And then the total fiscal impact for public works is we are looking at about a $1.2 million savings. I will point out one little math there. I transposed a couple of numbers on the O&M consultant. It should be 892, not 829. So the savings goes up above $1.2 million. And we think this will ultimately strengthen our ability to provide core services as well as give us other opportunities to invest that funding. One of the big things that I have seen from the Operations and Maintenance Division since our conversion is it wasn't just the cost savings. It was the technical knowledge. It was their ability to expand our programs. We didn't just save money. We also expanded our services. And that has been critical in how we maintain the city and has been great during our storm season this year as we were able to really take a step forward in preventing a lot of the issues that we had beforehand. So that concludes our presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you for that excellent presentation. At this time, I'll open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anyone signed up. We'll close the public comment opportunity and look for some guidance and direction here. I'll start to the left this time. Councilmember Suen?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the presentation. Yeah, I remember when, you know, we started implementing some of the, or at least the second phase of the Sinclair Report. So this is a natural progression. I think that, you know, some might see this as, you know, as soon as Measure E passed, we're bringing on a bunch of staff. But really, this is a progression of something that's been planned as the staff report says, since 2008. And it's time to, you know, I think consultant work has its role, being able to ramp up quickly, bring in expertise that you don't necessarily have in-house. But as an organization matures, I think it is worthwhile to make sure you have people that are vested in the city that, you know, they're not, one, beholden to any private entity and, two, not able to be shifted out on a different whim based on that entity's needs. And so I think there is, and having said that, you know, I mean, I've worked on both sides. So I mean, public sector and private sector as a consultant. So I do understand and appreciate the benefits of both sides. So again, I would say, you know, this is appropriate to move in this direction. I'm glad I had a great conversation with Mr. Werner and Mr. Behrmann about still making sure that we're doing it in a prudent manner. So I really appreciate the aspect of core employees that will be there to basically, you know, oversee the work and not, we're not just, again, this is not a mass hiring of staff that we will have to ensure, because we will have to ensure that there is enough work going forward. We don't want to ever wind up in a lull. And I appreciate, Kristen, your comments about there'll, there'll be other, and Mr. Gallagher, Sean as well, there'd be other things for these people to do. So there'll be no shortage of work for our staff. The cost savings, I'm, it's pretty obvious from what you're, we're seeing here. These are fully loaded rates for our employees, which includes benefits and retirement. That's their fully rate, full rate, that you're comparing against what we would be paying the consultant. And you're still have significant savings in that regard. And then getting more done, that's a big, important thing for all of us, too, is making sure that, that capital improvement plan, the things that are in there benefiting our city, we're able to make greater progress on those things. So that's very good to hear as well. And then finally, just the knowledge retention. Again, having employees here, you know, investing their time here, building that experience here and not, I mean, obviously, everybody can change jobs, but I think that there's less chance of that than being under the city umbrella, so to speak. So with that, having said all that, I support this direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
So I will join Councilman Suen on his, on his observations. And I think one thing, I was glad that you brought up the Measure E issue because actually, this is, this is a conversion of positions, not necessarily a net add. It's a net decrease, right? So I think that is further demonstrating that we're doing our best to be fiscally responsible, and it isn't about going out and spending spending. That's not what this is about. This is about conversion, thoughtful conversion.
Right.
And so I appreciate that. But I did have a question, I do have a question. It might be slightly early for the question. But Sean and Kristen, what do you think is the strategy for staffing relative to this? Did you plan to re-badge from contractor? Or do you have any insight on what you plan to do?
So we have been working on our plan for recruitments for next year and have a prioritization and plan. We'll go out to a full recruitment for these. They won't be just in-house with consultants. We'll be looking to really explore the whole playing field. We're looking to get the best, most qualified staff we can to fill these positions so that we can bring them in under our wings, get them trained, get them up to speed, get them immersed in the city, and be able to retain them as well.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have something to add, Sean?
No, I'd just add that from the operations standpoint, this won't really replace too many contracts that we have in place right now. It'll only reduce some of the technical work that they're performing for us. So we'll still have a majority, not maybe a majority, but most of our work will still be performed by contractors. They will just be performing the most skilled types of work out there.
Okay.
And I'll actually add that we have, we have on-call contracts with a number of consultants in our CIP Division. So in addition to the staff augmentation contract that we currently have, which still has a couple of years left in it, we have access to those consultants that are working with us now as we have needs beyond these staff as they're filled, right? And then we'll continue to have access to consultants to bring them in. As Councilman Suen mentioned, you know, when you need to ramp up for a project or you have a specialized need, we'll still have that ability and that flexibility. So we're not getting rid of it. We're, we're just bringing in the core positions. We intend on having several consultants in the CIP Division still provide project management for us in order to maintain that level of service.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Brewer?
Well, I really appreciate the report that was given by Ms. Parsons and Mr. Gallagher. I think it really speaks to the need of having talented, knowledgeable staff that you could bring in-house to really develop a core staffing model that can ensure success down the road. Because as the city continues to grow, we're going to have a lot of projects and a lot of demands that are going to be asked of public works. And so having, having your plan and strategy in place and having a clear line of sight, a vision for how you're going to integrate people into the city staff is going to be very key. And I'd really like that both of you have worked together to really crystallize what that will look like and the savings that it will produce for the taxpayers. It's, that's amazing. And there's not a whole lot else I'm going to say because everything that Councilmember Suen and Vice Mayor Spees had said really encapsulates all the benefits of a core staffing model and what that means to us. And I really thank Jeff for your leadership in working and really conveying that with us because, because it's really essential. As this city continues to grow, we want to have knowledgeable staff that can really work to service the needs of the city as it continues to grow and morph and become a full-service city. Because it's going to be important. And I really like that all three of you have your finger on the pulse on that. So thank you.
Councilmember Robles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kristen and Sean, just want to say thank you for this presentation. Kristin and Sean, just want to say thank you for this presentation. Kristin, you said one thing, effectiveness in service, and I think that's what's going to make a difference in our city and is definitely going to make a difference with staff. I'm pretty excited that this is going to, like, internal staff instead of consultants. That way, we're definitely going to be caring about the project, definitely going to be caring even more about the city because, you know, you have that buy-in, so I appreciate that. I'm excited about this, and just like the rest of the council, I'm in full support.
Ditto all the comments from my colleagues. Thank you for those. Three things that's, you know, just to summarize what, what I've heard, improved efficiency, reduced costs, adding accountability. So those are three excellent benchmarks for us, and then myself, you know, to echo a little bit of what Councilmember Robles said, the benefits of having in-house staff and becoming a part of our culture and the fabric of our community is, is wonderful, and as our city continues to grow, recruiting, retaining, having knowledgeable staff is, is very important and that longevity and so forth, so I look forward to see the, the dynamic talent that I'm sure we will find and having them a part of our culture. So thank you for that, and I too am in support, so I think you have the direction that you need. Thank you. Thank you both. All right, so next up, we have our council comments, reports, future agenda items. I will start to the right.
Mayor, if you'll just indulge me.
Yes, please.
Really, really quickly, I forgot to, I was going to have the chief say a few words about some of the memorial services that have gone on as well as one's plan.
Of course.
Yeah, so as you know, this is the beginning of law enforcement week nationally, and to honor Ty, who was killed on January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two by a DUI driver. This last week, the Sacramento Sheriff and Police Memorial had, we had an opportunity to memorialize him on the walls, a beautiful ceremony, and then at the state level, we also were able to memorialize him this last week on Monday, and then he will be also nationally recognized in the coming week. So we appreciate the support from the city, city council, all of our city staff during this last year and a half, which has been obviously a difficult process for us all as our first, but with the support we've had, it's been tremendous. So I just wanted to recognize everybody and say thank you very much.
Thank you, and it's been wonderful seeing the coverage, not only in the news media, but from locals and even our council colleagues that have attended various events, to make sure that our fallen heroes are never forgotten and that we're there for, for victims, which is so important, and our fallen heroes, you know, somber occasion, but much needed, and thank you for bringing that to our attention, and I'll continue on to our next item. It's item ten, council comments, reports, future agenda items. I'll start to the right if you have anything to report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Sun and I had a regional sand meeting today where we talked about bio-solid recycling alternatives, which there's a study that's going to be occurring, and we're just kind of getting information on that as well, and then pretty much talking a little bit about the cost, and they're going to be coming with some final cost on all the services that are being provided.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewer?
On April twenty-seventh, we held our Sacramento Public Library Commission meeting. We basically carried out a few items of detail regarding what activities going on throughout the county, at the Carmichael Library and at the Sacramento Library, but more important, in the coming weeks, we're going to be discussing the, the public library budget, and so that's going to be something that we're going to be engaging on as, as we, as, as we're all members of the, of the Budget Committee.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. Just expand on Councilmember Robles's report on the regional sand. We, we also adopted the operating budget that includes expenditure plan for the Harvest Water Project, and this project is going to use the tertiary treated echo water from the sanitation district plant to recharge our aquifers in the ag lands down in the, in the South County, and so it's a, it's a really exciting project for ecosystem restoration, agricultural sustainability, for drought tolerance, and the groundbreaking is going to be on May nineteenth, so excited to see that come to fruition. And then just to build on Chief Bobby Davis's comment, you know, I know a lot of us attended some events as well, and so I just acknowledged, you know, Councilmember Brewer and I attended the vigil, the candlelight vigil the other evening, so thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Spies?
It's getting a little late, isn't it?
It's getting late.
So we have S T A tomorrow. Councilmember?
Getting late.
Brewer? And I. I'm going to get a little sleep in between now and then, but something else I wanted to bring up relative to the, the historical society. Perhaps in the coming weeks, when you have an opportunity to have a conversation with them, one of the things that I think would be helpful is that, and I, and I won't explain to everybody because, look, for now, look it up, right, but Juneteenth is an important day relative to the Civil War, right? And so perhaps one of the things that you could suggest to them is a city-sponsored event of some sort, not a reenactment, I don't know how it could not, it couldn't be reenacted well, let's put it that way, but perhaps some, you know, speeches or some instruction about that to get more awareness on what Juneteenth is. So that's something I perhaps suggest you bring up with them, and perhaps it's city-sponsored, right? So, other than that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and when we have our meetings, we'll definitely have discussions about that. Thank you. An S T A subcommittee meeting, and we have a subcommittee to discuss future transportation ballot measure, the possibility of what that might look like and when, so nothing to report back other than there's a subcommittee that's reviewing this and looking at the other working groups that are also having similar conversations. There either is a poll or is going to be a poll that evaluates the desire for even a ballot measure either in twenty-four or twenty-six, so don't have any details on that, but lots of ongoing discussions as it relates to the future of transportation. Other than that, I do have meetings coming up this week as well, so we'll report on those next week.
Mayor, I also, I wanted to thank Chief, thank you so much for just being there for everyone and giving the speeches that you gave, and you could really feel it in the crowd. It, you know, it was just something special, and I truly appreciate it. I know some of the council members, like, there wasn't, we were all teary, and just the words and that you spoke, and you were talking about community and family and commitment to service, and that just resonated a lot, so I appreciate that, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Beautiful words. The Elk Grove community, so we're on to item eleven adjournment, and I would like to adjourn first in the memory of Shirley Peters, who was a longtime resident of Elk Grove and did tremendous work in the rural community, and just may her memory be a blessing to all those that knew her. And then also, there's just been a lot of gun violence and mass shootings in the last few weeks, and it's just heartbreaking. So I just want to also reflect on the victims of gun violence and the mass shootings in the last few weeks, of which I believe the youngest was a baby, a five-year-old, just so painful. So thank you, everyone, for joining. We will adjourn the meeting at nine oh three.